Further hearing in appeal between the application of Kevin Lewis against Redcar, Cleveland Borough Council and Mr Lang Holmes.
Yes, Mr George.
My lords, can I take your lordships back to a matter of fact which was raised by your lordship yesterday morning and it, we need to go to tab 11 in either the core volumes in the appendices and that plan. And there are two matters which arise. First of all, Lord Hope raised the question as to whether some of the houses there shown were later.
Yes.
Lord, looking at this plan, if your lordship can find the northernmost of the red dotted lines, which has got red hatching immediately below it.
Yes.
That road is High Street West. And the houses immediately to the north of that and between that land and the application site, those houses have been there for many years. They're not new houses and they have got, as you can see, rear gardens and it is those rear gardens, many of which have got gates and have access on to the land. Lord, we can take this a little bit further. If your lordships would go to page 121, which is paragraph five of the 2006 main report. And in paragraph five, in the third bullet point and the second sentence of the bullet point, he's dealing with the southern boundary. The boundary to the west of Church Street consists of the rear fences of the houses on the north side of High Street West.
Yes.
So that is what one is.
So just hold up your plan and show me High Street West.
Lord, it's...
It's the one where the dotted line runs along.
It's the red dotted, the red dashed line going along there. That is High Street West.
Yes. And the west section of that, you can see the gardens up to where it says eight. Is that it?
That's right. Up to where it say, up to where between eight and...
FF1.
And FF1.
It's those gardens.
That is rear gardens of houses.
Yes.
Then, Lord, following on from that, if I could just ask your lordship to go to page 141 in the same report. In paragraph 117 of the evidence of Vera Duncan, and it's the last five lines, at one time the club sought legal advice from Mr Stanley Nixon, a solicitor who was present at the club. The issue was whether the club could stop people in High Street West from opening gates on to the golf course. Mr Nixon advised the club could not do anything about it and the matter was taken no further. And their match has never been cancelled. So that is, just dealing with Lord Head's query, that is the position there and people were coming through there and the golf club were being advised that they couldn't stop people there opening gates and coming in.
Yes, and it's interesting, 124, paragraph 20, the squadron leader, until he moved to Norwich, had a house in High Street West with a garden gate leading on to the course.
Yes, my lord.
Yep.
Now, Lord, the second matter relates to a matter raised by Lord Brown yesterday morning. And I wonder if a plan could be distributed which is a blow-up of the plan we've just been looking at, which is at page, at tab 11. And...
Mr Lawrence has seen this plan. Mr Lawrence has seen this plan.
Mr Lawrence has seen the plan and I'm going to make a caveat about this plan. And the caveat is that it, the boundaries of the rough do not profess to be precise. They've been drawn from the best of the recollection of the applicants. Your lordship's therefore, so far as rough areas, and these are rough areas in the sense of being areas, not the traditional rough of a golf course, but the land which is described by Mr Chapman as lying outside the area of play, the precise boundaries of that are not intended to be shown. This is indicative only. But I don't think there's any dispute about what's the key matters here. If your lordship first would find T1, do your lordships have T1 on the right-hand side, bottom right?
The first T, yeah.
T, that's where you tee off and then to the left, your lordships will see a one, that is the green for one. Go then to the top of the plan and you've got T18 going through to the green at where 18 is positioned. And so far as PN, top right, that's the practice net. And PH, does your lordship see PN, top right?
Yes, yes, yes.
And PH on the right is a put, is a practice, it's what I, your lordship, now, it's a putting green, it's a practice hole and that's somewhere for practising your putting.
There isn't a practice ground at all.
No, no, it's not, it's not a practice ground, it's somewhere where you can practise your putting. Lord, I say, if your lordship would like to mark that as 219A, but heavily caveat it that it does not purport to show with precision and we ourselves are unable to provide any photographs. We have got some photographs, but they're on my client's computer, which is up in Redcar and he, and no-one else is there and able to get access to them. Maybe if possible the registration authority can help. We've done our very best, we simply cannot assist further.
Well, I thought upstairs some photographs had been, I haven't seen them, but I know they exist. I don't know, perhaps, are they of any help?
Well, I don't know, I haven't seen, I, I...
Where are they gone?
A wet house where peace comes.
Shows the entire golf course, I think.
Ah, oh lord, I'm told these are 2005 photos, afraid I don't know what this is and how your lordship's got them, I do not know, but it shows the efficiency of the system. Did you put these in?
That's High Street West.
Yes, well, High Street West exists quite plainly there at that time, so it's all...
This is 2005, it's a Google, an aerial view.
Well, let's put that to one side, just now.
There, well, I can see High Street West. This is a Google, I'm told this is a Google Earth photograph, from what year?
2005.
From 2005 and at a time, and I can't take the matter further, but that may have been some assistance, your lordship. Now, my lords, can we come back to the Oxfordshire case? And for this purpose, please, my lords, could we go in volume two of the authorities to tab 28? My lordship, of course, I was going through the authorities at, in the House of Lords dealing with this sort of matter. Now, so far as Oxfordshire...
Sorry, two, what's it?
Tab 2, 28.
28.
26 and 27 are first instance in Court of Appeal, which I don't rely on at all. 228 is Oxfordshire, where we're, all the, many of the council before your lordship were appearing in that case. Mr Pike was for the claimant, I was for the owner, Mr Lawrence and Miss Creel were for the registration authority and two of your lordships, Lord Roger and Lord Walker, were part of the tribunal. Lords, a council generally had set the court what two of their lordships described as an examination paper and two of their lordships protested that some of the questions were excessive and declined to, and declined to answer them. But, my lord, that, the key matter is that none of the questions had anything to do with the meaning of as of right, since it was common ground that the use had been, had satisfied the tripartite test. At issue was whether that use had to continue to the date of registration, as held by the Court of Appeal, or to application, or whether it didn't even have to continue to application, it was enough if you had a 20-year period. Secondly, whether a successful application led to rights being conferred in respect of the land. Thirdly, whether the Victorian legislation applied to registered village greens. And fourthly, whether there was a power in the registration authority to register an area which was different from, and indeed most cases less than, that which had been applied for. And the simple answer of the majority of those courts, of the majority of the court to those matters was, yes, it did have to continue to the date of registration in the absence of the Secretary of State having prescribed a period, as he was entitled to prescribe under the 2000 Act, he hadn't prescribed a period, so it had to continue to the date of the application. It didn't have to continue to the date of registration.
Well, we're not really troubled by these parts, are we?
You're not troubled with that. Secondly, that, secondly, that it did lead to the conferring of rights. Thirdly, that the Victorian legislation did apply. And fourthly, that there was a power to register less the, indeed on procedural matters, the registration authority had considerable flexibility.
But looking down the list of cases referred to at 676, we see Lang Homes appearing. Is this the first time that Lang Homes came before their lordships?
Yes, my lord.
And it's of interest to see what they said about it.
Absolutely, my lord. Now, my lords, so far as the questions and everything, lordship finds that at paragraph 35. Now, my lords, Oxfordshire was a nil-use case, a no-use by the owner, but in my submission the result would have been exactly the same if, say, the city council conducted a regular maintenance operation, including coppicing etcetera, because it was a very wooded area, it's the most surprising area, most of it was impenetrable. And if, if the city council had had a regular husbandry and indeed had an axeman on-site every day doing bits of trimming and so forth, it would have been exactly the same in my submission, notwithstanding that it had been a very foolish local inhabitant who went near the axeman when he was swinging his axe or using a saw. And indeed, if the axeman had chosen to put up one of those little orange tapes round the area where he's working, my lord, in my submission again, that would have been irrelevant to the matter. But on its facts, it was a no-use case.
Well, just to stop you there, I mean, there could be, could be cases where the owner of the land excludes the public. I mean, Lang Homes actually may be explicable on that basis, that you, the owner wants to take crops, wants to take grass for silage or whatever it is, and so he's not prepared to have public, the public on his land, say, three days a year. And perhaps notice is up to that effect, but that's what he does. And you could say, well, all right, for the other part of the year, the use is precario, but that's demonstrated by the fact that he stands on his rights when he needs to. Now, I don't think this case is that kind of case, is it?
It's not, and your lordship's entirely right. Say that when we get to Lang Homes, we'll see, the farmer didn't exclude the inhabitants altogether, they carried on in the fields, it was simply that they stuck to the perimeter of the field rather than going into the centre of the field.
Yes.
But your lordship's entirely right, if, for instance, on Oxfordshire, for the husbandry, they had for periods of weeks fenced off areas of the land for husbandry or for whatever it was, then I entirely agree with your lordship, issues of continuity would arise, i.e. whether the 20 years had run. But the mere fact that the inhabitants might have showed some deference and kept out of the way of the axeman in the example I'm giving, in my submission, would made no difference. And, Lord, can I just quickly come to the relevant parts of Oxfordshire?
Yes.
In paragraph one, your lordship has a helpful description of the land, I'm not going to read it, but it's a, it's foggy scrubland. My lord, then, and perhaps the paragraph two is interesting, the first sentence, not idyllic. And then, my lord, if we can come on to paragraph 25...
Do we get any clearer to the area? I'm sure we do.
Oh, it was...
Nine acres, nine acres, sorry.
It's nine acres, but, my lord, I've got a feeling that some of that was, the inspector, some of that, some of that was excluded by agreement by parties, either really, a bit was underwater, a third, your lordship will see at the top of page...
But we're talking as a substantial area.
It's a substantial area, it's a bit north of Worcester College, if your lordship remembers, that area of Oxford, it's up there just before you get out on to the meadows proper. It's up in north, north-west Oxfordshire and it's that, it's that area to the, to the west of the, of the main road, the left-hand fork of the main road going out of Oxford. That's where it is and it was registered on the basis, the locality was the Ecclesiastical Parish, the particular Church of English parish, that was the locality and the inhabitants of that locality had gone on this swampy former lettuce ground. Lord, only Lord Scott is, he dissent, I mean, he says very clearly, he can't see how this could possibly be a village green, but the majority of the lordship tells that it was. But, my lords, yes, I think in the nine acres, one should really come down to six acres eventually. Then, my lord, if I could take your lordships to paragraph 25. And in the first sentence, Lord Hoffman simply summarises the effect of Sunnywell, but can I just take your lordships to the second sentence of paragraph 25? Once 20 years' user had been established, the only substantial hurdle which the applicant for registration had to overcome was, as it had been in the Victorian cases on customary greens, proof that the user had been by the inhabitants of a defined locality. And, my lords, that's precisely what we say has happened here. Then one goes on to paragraph 50, which is at page 697. Now, paragraph 50 is cited in the first respondents' case, paragraph 51 is in my own case, is paragraph 71. And it's there that Lord Hoffman says that the rational construction of section 10 of the 1965 Act is that land registered can be used generally for sports and pastimes. Parliament must have thought that if the land had to be kept available for one form of recreation, it wouldn't matter a great deal to the owner whether it was used for others as well. This would be in accordance with the common law. Paragraph 51.
Sorry, could I just, I can't recollect whether the point was put to the House of Lords in that case, that the Commons Registration Act 1965 was meant to be stage one of a general reform and that stage two was going to deal with, among other things, what were the consequences of registration?
My lord, that was precisely my submission, my lord, which I made and which had, which had the support of Lord Denning in...
Well, Lord Denning in New Windsor, which was quoted quite a lot in this case, emphasised that, didn't he?
Yes, yes, Lord Denning had said, had said that it had been common ground in Lang Homes between my, between the party for, for the Langs and the Secretary of State who intervened in that case, that that was the position. And that was argued, may have been argued inadequately, it was argued inadequately because I failed in the argument, but I, but we worked through the passages and, and at the end of the day, your lordships decided with Lord Hoffman, no, that the 1965 Act was not a first stage. It had been my submission in Oxfordshire, that all that was intended was to produce a register.
Did, did the lords decide that or simply...
Oh yes, my lord, my lord, that's why I'm looking at, at paragraph, it undoubtedly was, it is the main point, which is...
48.
Sorry? Paragraph 48.
Contemplated by no means clear, yes.
It's by no means clear, Parliament contemplated further legislation.
So he's, Lord Hoffman's distinguishing rights of common, where certainly another stage of legislation, what was intended, yeah.
And it had been my submission that it was at the later stage that it was going to be decided, two matters, A, was it really in the public interest that all of this land should be sterilised by becoming a village green, so that you couldn't simply develop it? And secondly, that at the second stage, one would decide who was going to get the rights, whether it was really sensible to have land of which the parishioners of a particular Church of England parish were the only people entitled to go on to it, or whether it was to come proper public open space where all the public could go on to it, all those matters, and also a regime for management. That was my submission, but your lordships overwhelmingly, and indeed, I got no support, I think, from anyone, said, said that registration, that said that registration led to rights. The only disagreement was that Lord Scott said that he believed the only right would be the right which had been exercised in the 20 years. And that wouldn't matter on the facts of this case because here, in Redcar, there's been a use for, you know, 101 different lawful sports and active pastimes. It was quite important in Oxfordshire because the only use had been a pedestrian, had been a pedestrian use and with dogs and so forth. And as one of the, as Lord Scott pointed out, Miss Robinson, who was a nature enthusiast, would have been horrified at the idea that people could go on the land and play kick footballs around and so forth and disturb the wildlife.
But we don't, we don't really need to get into, into that area. I think it is well-known that there is further legislation being contemplated today, isn't there? I think a question was asked in the House of Lords yesterday, if I'm right, about some further legislation dealing with village greens, certainly there is, you may find if you look up the questions in answer, either yesterday or the day before, last week, that there is something being discussed.
But I would suspect that there is always something planned, but, my lord, the past experience is that there has been a great slowness to deal with the matter and in that we've had, but, my lord, I can't, I can't say, I do not know.
Well, don't speculate.
The Parliament looked at the matter in 2006, after the decision of the House of Lords, so in the knowledge that rights were conferred and passed the Commons, the Commons Act 2006 a little bit later.
Yes.
But I'm just reading history.
So, paragraph 51.
50 is that it can be used generally, 51, this does not mean that the owner is altogether excluded from the land, he still has the right to use it in any way which doesn't interfere with the recreational rights of the inhabitants. There has to be give and take on both sides. Fitch and Fitch was a sea court to Fitch and Rawling, in which the custom of playing cricket on land at Steeple Bumpstead had been established. The evidence was that the defendants had trampled the grass which the owner had mowed, thrown the hay about and mixed some of it with gravel. Mr Dusty Heath said, "The inhabitants have a right to take their amusement in a lawful way. It is supposed, because they have such a right, the plaintiff should not allow the grass to grow." That's the owner. "There is no foundation in law for such a position. The rights of both parties are distinct and may exist together. If the inhabitants come in an unlawful way or not fairly," can I emphasise those words, "or not fairly," "to exercise the right they claim of amusing themselves or to use it in an improper way, they're not justified under the custom pleaded. The judge at page 454 asked the jury to decide whether the defendants had entered the close and the fair exercise of right and the jury found fault plaintiff." Lord, can I just pause there for a second? We'll come to that case later, but in my submission, that if the facts of this case had come before a county court or the High Court in, let us say, 1964, so, well, actually the 65 Act comes in, in 67, let's say it came in 1964, it's my submission, that the inhabitants would have had no problem in proving a custom, and this assumes that their use had been from, I should have said this, from 1946 to 66, I'm not saying we've got evidence of that here, but if there was 20 years' use, then the same principle in Mills and Colchester Corporation would apply, you would look at the matter, had they used the matter as of right? If so, then as the judge said in that case, if it had been used, neck v neck, cloud of career. Therefore, the word used in Mills and Colchester, the custom would be established. Now, it's a rather, and notwithstanding the fact that there'd been some use, just as there was a farming use in Fitch and Fitch, but the inhabitants could establish a right to recreate, notwithstanding it. Now, it's a rather strange view, in my interpretation, that if the Commons Act is introduced to make it generally rather easier to register rights over land, it should be held no, that you can't any longer do a Fitch and Rawling type establishment of a custom if there has been any element of deference to the owner. It was quite plainly, in Fitch and Rawling, for the system to work, the inhabitants had got to keep off the crops and couldn't do that. And yet they could establish their custom, which then had to be exercised in a fair way, just as the example my lord Hope gave yesterday of the, for the owner riding his horse down a, either a public or a private right of way and the people getting out of his way.
Now, do we move on to paragraph 57, where we get a reference to Lang?
Yes, my lord, that's right. But I ought to come to 53, just, just in 53, the second, the third sentence, "The primary purpose of the 1965 Act as applied to town and village greens was not to create new rights which override those of the owner." It was to create a register. Lord, then can we come to, can we come on, as your lordship urges me, just to note in paragraph 56, the second sentence, the Victorian statutes do apply, that's paragraph 56, second sentence, and then the key passage, paragraph 57.
Yes.
Now, before I get to 57, can I just remind your lordship of this? Lang Homes was only cited and referred to at all, indeed, don't remember it ever coming up much in argument, the only instance arose was as to whether the rights being exercised on the land were rights of way or whether they were a right of lawful sports and pastimes. That had been an issue which arose in Lang Homes and that was the only context in which Lang Homes was actually referred to by any council in the case. And, my lords, your lordship will find in paragraph 68, at page 702, actually it's at the very top of 703, that's the context where Lang Homes arose, the question as to whether the people walking their dogs were exercising, were doing something which would eventually lead to a public right of way or to a village green. But, my lord, that was, that was the reason why council put the Lang Homes case in, not in relation to any point of deference, because that didn't apply on the facts of Oxfordshire. However, Lord Hoffman, having read Lang Homes, makes some comments in paragraph 57. And can I just read to you, Lord, at 57? "There's virtually no authority on the effect of the Victorian statutes. The 57 Act seems to be maimed at nuisances, bringing on animals and dumping rubbish, and the 1876 Act on encroachments fencing off building. I don't think that either act was intended to prevent the owner from using the land consistently with the rights of the inhabitants under the principle discussed in Fitch and Fitch. Now, strictly, that is obiter, because that was not a matter which fell to be decided, but that was Lord Hoffman's view. This was accepted by Sullivan, Mr Sullivan in Lang Homes. In that case, the land was used for, inverted commas, low-level agricultural activities." That was the inspector's phrase, yes. "Such as taking a hay crop at the same time as it was being used by the inhabitants for sports and pastimes, because for just over half of the 20-year period, there'd been an annual hay crop thereafter it went and set aside. No doubt the use of the land by the owner may be relevant to the question of whether he would have regarded persons using it for sports and pastimes as doing so as of right." Well, that's a key sentence I could come back to in a moment. But with respect to the judge, that's to Mr Mr Sullivan, I do not agree that the low-level agricultural activities must be regarded as having been inconsistent with use for sports and pastimes for the purposes of section 22 if in practice they were not. were not. And, my lord, in that sentence, can I ask your lords to note the word 'the' low-level agricultural activities? It's not just low-level, it's particular rating to 'the' low-level agricultural activities in Lang Homes. And what Lord Hoffman is doing, obiter, is expressing concern. He was not in agreement with the judge that those low-level agricultural activities had been inconsistent and therefore should have led to the land not being registered. He was saying, he was plainly implying that it, it, it might have gone the other way. Nor do I follow how the fact that upon registration the land would be subject to the eighteen fifty-seven and eighteen seventy-six acts can be relevant to the question whether there's been the requisite user by local inhabitants for upwards of twenty years before the date of the application. As I draw attention to that, again, it's obiter, but clearly what he's saying is you simply look at the word of the statute, has there been the necessary twenty years' use by local inhabitants as of right? You're not concerned with what the consequences may be under the eighteen fifty-seven and eighteen seventy-six act. Then he says, I have similar difficulty with paragraph one-four-one of the judgment of Judge Howard in Humphreys, in which he decided that acts of grazing and fertilising by the owner, which in his opinion would have contravened the eighteen fifty-seven and eighteen seventy-six acts, if the land had been a village green at the time, prevented the land from satisfying the section twenty-two definition. And, my lord, just to unpick that, your lordships need to know that in Lang Homes, there were two ratios in relation to the, what I would call the deference point. One was that in that the owner had been doing something which would be prohibited if the land was a village green, namely, putting water troughs and various other things there, the land couldn't, couldn't be registered. So that's what we call the Victorian statutes point. And the second was that the, in that the people had kept to the edges of the field and kept out of the way of the farmer when he was carrying out his activities, they hadn't, they had deferred and hadn't given the appearance of exercising a claim of right. So there were those two different ratios, and what Lord Hoffman is doing is unpicking those two matters. And in the final part of paragraph fifty-seven, he's saying he doesn't agree with the Victorian statutes point, which was the point which had been picked up by Judge Howard in Humphreys and Rochdale and ratcheted up even a little bit before, beyond the way Mr Justice Sullivan got it. And that's not in dispute now, no one is arguing the Victorian statutes point. In the first part, he is looking at the first matter and expressing the view that on the particular facts of the low-level agricultural activities in Lang Homes, he does not agree that that must be regarded as having been inconsistent.
I mean, hay, I don't know much about haymaking, but presumably, I mean, you just simply can't during several months and before you crop, immediately before you crop it, you can't go and play football, and it would spoil the crop.
Well, my lord, on the facts of Lang Homes, there was no evidence that people had kept off it while it was growing, but it was common ground, and people had walked their dogs through it and so forth, that had all gone on, but it was common ground that while the landowner was out with his tractor for a morning, it was a huge site, forty-six acres, I think, something like Lang Homes, three big fields, that whilst he had been with his tractor irrigate, putting fertiliser on the land, they'd always kept off it, because stones were flying all over the place as you, as you did that, and when he'd been harrowing it, they'd kept off it, and that when he, when he actually went on with his combine harvester, again, to harvest it, they had kept off.
You don't, you don't harvest hay with a combine harvester.
I'm sorry, my lord, what he used was, what he used was a big cutter, you're quite, quite right, your lordship's entirely right, what he brought on was a big mechanical cutter, and we had, there was lots of evidence which, which, which had cut it, and that where they had kept the boundaries while the cutter was, was on it, and they'd kept off it with a very few exceptions during the few days that it was, that, that, that it was lying there dry.
It just doesn't make sense to defer to the farmer while he's making the hay, if you've been trampling on it for, for the six or seven or eight weeks that it's, that it's growing, so there isn't any crop to harvest, and that's nonsense.
Well, my, 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 my lord, we've, we've, we've come to the fact of it, certainly the concentration was, was, was not on, there was, there was no suggestion that there had been a period of months where no one had gone on, and there was evidence that children had enjoyed playing among the crop and so forth, and indeed, the farmer gave evidence.
Really, if I just interrupt you here, I mean, it's up to the owner, the owner can say, look, this is a valuable crop, as far as I'm concerned, there comes a stage during the growing process where I'm simply not prepared for people walking across my ground, you can close it off. That's why that sentence about what in practice happens is so important, because that, that really tells you, it's up to the owner, he can see perfectly well what's going on, he has the choice, as you said yesterday, he didn't exercise it. And that being so, one would say that it's not inconsistent with what the owner wants to do, and that's all about it, really, that is, that's what comes out of this case, and is the way Lang Homes might have been approached.
My lord, my lord, I, my lord, I entirely agree.
So can we move on through, through Oxfordshire?
Well, my lord, I just, it's that sentence, no doubt, to as of right, which the Court of Appeal found, found very significant, so I have to highlight it, and I simply ought to have to make my submission to you, which, which is that the activities of the owner, in my submission, that they are not relevant to whether or not the land has become a village green, unless they are activities which have either excluded the people, or they are activities which have permitted them. And, my lord, I find difficulty with that sentence, no doubt, I say that with great diffidence, but, my lords, I, I find difficulty with that.
Just taking up the point, Lord Hope made just now, just so I understand it, supposing the thing has become established as a village green, and I'm a, I'm a farmer who's got hay, growing hay, can I, can I shut a gate and keep people off?
My lord, you can't, you can't, you, again, you're, you're going to be subject to the old concept of give and take. My lord, if you prevented people, if people had regularly walked their dogs, I don't think you could exclude people from walking, it would be an aspect of the give from the farmer, that he'd have to allow the local residents to go round the edge, but on the other hand, the give by the inhabitants would be that they would have to let the farmer exercise his reasonable rights as an owner, which was the, the matter of taking the crop.
Would the farmer be entitled to an injunction to prevent the people?
Well, my lord, I think probably he would, certainly Petchy in his article suggests he would, there is no, there, there is, there, there is no case where that happens, except going back to Fitch and Fitch, because in effect, in Fitch and Fitch, the owner was getting what in modern terms would be an injunction to prevent the local inhabitants, who'd established in the previous case that they got a customary right to engage on the land, but Fitch and Fitch prevented them exercising their customary right in an unfair way, when it amounted to actually damaging his hay crop. So we're back to this area of give and take. My lord, I, I'm not going to take your lordships to any passages in Lord Scott's judgment, because he was dissenting on some points, but I should just mention one-one-four, where, at page seven-one-eight, where Lord Roger agrees with Lord Hoffman, but I take it there, that's agreement with, so to speak, the ratio matters, rather than necessarily with anything obiter. I mean, there isn't an expression of dissent from the obiter, but as I understand it, when your lordships agree, you're agreeing with the matters which are fundamental to the determination of the case. And then in Lord Walker, if we could come on to paragraph one-two-four, similarly, he's in full agreement with Lord Hoffman, so that includes all the rights and so forth, and then, there's a, if I may say so, a wonderful phrase at the last sentence, paragraph one-two-five, an overgrown rubble soon settled submerged area, and then one-two-eight, Lord Walker expressly, your lordship held that the Royal, it wasn't the matter, hadn't been deferred to the Royal Commission, that rights were being established. And, my lords, Baroness Hale was the one who didn't like the examination paper, and, my lord, I particularly. Now, what, what we say is that Oxfordshire is largely irrelevant to the matters your lordships have to decide, it wasn't dealing with that matter, but what it does do is give a strong pointer that, as I say, the Victorian statutes point, which was one of the grounds on which Mr Chapman initially decided the first matter was a wrong ground, and Mr Chapman relished from that ground, he, he eventually decided in the light of Oxfordshire, he wouldn't advise the registration authority to rely on the other ground, but Mr Chapman believed that the principle of deference in Lang Homes was still alive and well, particularly in the light of that sentence, which we've looked at, no doubt, in paragraph fifty-seven of Lord Hoffman, and therefore, the case precedes, the decision on the second application proceeds on the basis that you've got a deference similar to Lang Homes, and therefore, this land could not be registered. Lord, the last House of Lords authority to take your lordships to is Godmanchester, and this is the last occasion, which I'm aware, that the House of Lords considered provisions including as of right, and that is volume three, tab thirty, and it was in the connection with footpaths, and if your lordships would go, in the judgment of Lord Hoffman at paragraph one, page two-four-four, section thirty-one-one of the Highways Act nineteen eighty is set out, and if your lordships at any stage want the full text of it, it's in the appendix at page two-seven-one. Lords, as Lord Hope will recollect, the great part of the discussion in Godmanchester wasn't with the issue of as of right, but was with the proviso to section one, and if your lordship go to paragraph one and see that in the Highways Act was that proviso, that unless there is sufficient evidence, there was no intention during the period to dedicate it, a proviso which does not appear in the two thousand and six act. So it is easier to register village green rights than it is to register, or to, as I say, register, because there is a register of public rights of way, than it is to register public right of way, because in case of a public right of way, the landowner can defeat it if he can show that there's sufficient evidence that there was no intention during the period to dedicate it. And that is the, is on that proviso that the case generally turned. Lord, I need only take your lordship to a very few passages. First, paragraph twenty-four, in Lord Hoffman's speech, he's rather critical of some comments by Mr Justice Law, it was in a case called Jakes, and then at paragraph twenty-four, I don't follow this at all, the evidence which will satisfy the proviso is not something less than enjoyment as of right, but something different. The next passage is interesting. For example, there may be a notice which says no right of way, trespassers will be prosecuted. Nevertheless, for upwards of twenty years, members of the public may have ignored the notice and used the way openly and apparently in the assertion of a right to do so. Their user will satisfy section thirty-one-one, but the landowner, even on the most objective test, will have satisfied the proviso. And, my lord, I draw your lordship's attention to that, because I said yesterday that my very respectful submission to your lordship is to keep a bit clear of the difficult question of the effect of prohibitory notices in village green cases, because it deserves quite lengthy argument, but certainly there, you've got the view being expressed by Lord Hoffman, this will be obiter, because it wasn't the matter of question, the obiter, that you can be as of right, notwithstanding that you're in breach of a prohibitory notice. In the case of a right of way, it won't matter, because the putting up the notice will be evidence of intention to dedicate. My lord, the next passage is in paragraph.
Not to dedicate, I think.
I think that must be so.
Evidence not to dedicate.
Yes. Intention not to dedicate.
Particularly if the notice is kept in good order and is, is properly.
Then, my lord, I can then move straight on to, my lord, Lord Hope, at paragraph fifty-two, deemed dedication may be relied on a common law where there's been evidence of a user by the public for so long and in such a manner that the owner of the fee, whoever he is, must have been aware that the public was acting under the belief that the way had been dedicated, and the owner had taken no steps to disavow him of that belief. Now, my lord, Hope's phrase there, so long and in such a manner, is very similar to Lord President Hope's words in Cumbernold, where his phrase was such amount and in such manner, plainly so long goes to the twenty years' continuous use, and in such a manner, in my submission, goes to the tripartite test. Lord, at paragraph sixty-seven, Lord Scott, dealing with the interpretation of section one, and as of right, at just below letter H, the language plainly borrowed from section two of the eighteen thirty-two act, but the meaning of as of right must be interpreted in the context of dedication or prescription, and, and so on, and if the, if the first question will be given the answer, yes, that's if it's been used, there'll be a deemed dedication, and then the statute inclusion, the deemed dedication stands unless the statutory condition of escape, sufficient evidence, that's the proviso, applies. And, my lord, apply that to the facts of our own case, we've got the answer to the first question, yes, it has been actually enjoyed, and there isn't any specified statutory condition of escape under the Commons Act two thousand and six. And therefore, the rights, the position is there, that this customary right is established. Lord, Lord Newburger.
It's all puzzling, isn't it, because actually, I don't know, but as a layman, I mean, it seems that in a way, the precario aspect, to some extent, incorporates the considerations which go to the proviso there. I mean, notices, I, I think you accept, are very much a part of the precario element of the tripartite test in our case.
Well, my lord, in, in my submission about notices, is, is, there's no doubt, permissive notices are precario, there's no, there's no problem there. Lord, the, the problem area, and I say it's not one your lordships have to decide, is what is the effect of a prohibitory notice? Now, under, there's no doubt that under the Highways Act, there are evidence under the proviso of the intention not to dedicate. My lord, under the village green legislation, there is a dispute. On the one hand, there is a dictum of Lord Walker in Beresford, and there's Lord Hoffman's a stronger statement in Godmanchester, that a prohibitory notice, if people disregard it, doesn't prevent it being as of right. On the other hand, there is the view expressed by Lord Justice Carnworth in the Court of Appeal in Oxford, that a prohibitory notice has the effect of making use thereafter, a use which is V, on the grounds that a contentious, it is then a contentious use. And, my lord, that, as I say, is the point which is, it is well-deserving of sustained argument, I don't believe this is the place, because it doesn't arise on the facts of our particular, particular case. Lord Newburger, paragraph eighty, and paragraph eighty, one of the purposes of the Rights of Way Act was to get rid of the landowner's ability to rely on the argument that he treated the users of way as tolerated trespassers, just a useful reminder, really, of the point in which come up through Beresford and so forth, that this idea of tolerate, of tolerance as an explanation has gone. You're either there as of right, or you're there by permission, there's no escape for people there being there by tolerance, if they're by tolerance, they're there as of right. And, my lords, at the end of that perusal of a large number of House of Lords authorities, the submissions are very short, first, they show that there has to be a continuous and open use, twenty years under the tripartite test, they don't suggest there's They don't suggest there's any additional ingredient. That's the first submission. The second, Cumbernold and Beresford, accompanied by that comment of Lord Newburger, show that the scope for implied licenses is very small, and that there's no scope for tolerance. And thirdly, Cumbernold, adopted in Beresford, shows that there is no need for the landowner to have been inconvenienced by the activities of the users. There's no need for the landowner to have had to give away, or only looking at the use, whether there had been the use. Lord, one further case, and I'd like to send to a Court of Appeal case, Mills and Silver, which is at volume two, page twenty-five, tab twenty-five, the case which Lord Walker in Beresford said he'd found the most helpful of all the cases in this rather difficult era. Lord, before we come to Mills and Silver, can I just, on the facts, explain to your lordship, it was about the use of a track in Wales, a farm track, and there were two issues. First of all, whether the use had been by implied consent, or by a sort of tolerance, which prevented it being as-of-right. And secondly, whether there'd been the necessary continuity for the full twenty-year period. And the Court of Appeals' answer, reversing the judge below, was that this was not a case of implied consent, and that there was no role for any concept of tolerance. Tolerance simply led on to acquiescence. And secondly, that there had been the necessary continuity, albeit, as tends to be the case with easements, you're not exercising the whole time. Lords, so far, so far as the tolerance points, the key passages are in the masterly judgment of Lord Justice Dillon at two seven nine, G to H, where he deals with Alfred Beckett and Lance, which eventually gets put in its place. And I simply mention that passage. Then at two eight one, G to H, it's an important passage. It's to be noted, a prescriptive right arises where there's been user as-of-right, in which the servient owner has with the requisite degree of knowledge, which is not an issue in the present case, acquiesced. Therefore, mere acquiescence in or tolerance of the user by the servient owner cannot prevent the user being user as-of-right for purposes of prescription. Now, to really, with a point which was adopted in Beresford. And then two eight three, H, to, two oh one B, where Gardiner is cited.
Sorry, to two eight four.
Sorry, two eight three, my lord.
I know.
At H to two eight four, letter B.
Yes, actually.
And that is where Hodgson's is cited, and then Beckett and Lance is given the acquiescence. Beckett and Lance had been a case which had floated around for a long time, where it was attributed to tolerance, and that is really put in its place. And then, so far as continuity, we, the matter is dealt with at two eight five, G and following. And your lordships may notice, the case of Hollins and Verney, which we're coming to a moment, is relied on, because Hollins and Verney is a case about continuity. And it's the difficult question of how many intermissions there can be in the user during the twenty-year period, and still enable you to say it. But it's cited and relied on, we're going to come to it in a moment, purely in the quest, purely in the context of continuity. And two eight, and then we come on to two eight six, B to C, where despite the fact that the judge had held that there hadn't been the continuity, they held that this was merely an inference from the facts, and that the court could review that matter again. Then, Miss, Lord Justice Parker's judgment is relied upon by Mr. Lawrence. And your lordships will recall that those various comments from Lord Justice Parker are discussed by Lord Bingham and by Lord Walker in Beresford. So we've already come across the various passages. But I just draw your attention, lords, to two eight eight, D to E, where he says, the crucial matter for consideration is whether for the necessary period, the uses such as, following the citation of Hollins and Verney. But that's in relation to the continuity point. Had there been the necessary continuity of use? And then, two eight nine, letter B, the passage I've already referred to, were commenting on Lord Halsbury in Gardiner. In my view, when Lord Halsbury uses the words against the will of the person, he means no more than without the licence of the owner. We've come across that previously, and that was the passage which is cited in the speech of, of Lord Walker in Beresford. And then, lastly, if I take your lordship to two ninety, C to D, in Lord Justice Parker, again, following reference to Sturges and Hollins, the true approach is to determine the character of the acts of user enjoyment. If they're sufficient to amount to an assertion of a continuous right to continue, then such, and such owner does nothing, that is sufficient. So that, again, is in the context of continuity. And then, two ninety, E to F, the new paragraph, I add only this, that any statement that the enjoyment must be against the will of the servient owner cannot mean more than without objection by the servient owner. That's, again, going back to Lord Halsbury's phase in Hodgson's, and as I reminded your lordship earlier, A, that is the phrase which Lord Bingham in Beresford cited with parent approval, and, but the slight oddity is that Lord Parker has interpreted that phrase slightly differently at the top of two eight nine. At two eight nine B, the phrase he uses is without the licence of the owner in two ninety E, comes back to the phrase and says without objection. Maybe there's no difference, but there's a slight change of terminology. And, my lord, so far as Lord Justice Stocker's judgment is concerned, three passages, two nine three, B to C, is a passage in which the word toleration is discussed and is put in its place, if I may put it. Toleration leads to acquiescence, a way of defeating as-of-right. And then, two nine four, D to F, and particularly just above letter G, the finding, I agree with Phil and Jay, that the finding of the judge, the effect, the extension of continuity was insufficient in terms of inference as fact, not a finding of prime fact, and is open to review. And two nine four, F to G, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, two nine four, yes. I, I think I've already cited that passage. And that, that's sufficient. Lord, in my submission, that's entirely consistent with Beresford, there's nothing which is against me in that authority. Indeed, it rather against the force, but what it does was, as I say, use the issue of tolerance in its place, and emphasised the role of acquiescence, which was the first of the three matters I drew your lordships, asked your lordships to bear in mind throughout their consideration of the matter. Now, my lords, there are a number of cases where rights are acquired by twenty-years user, where the user does respect the owner's position. I mentioned the single carriageway with the passing bays yesterday. Lord, a more obvious example is the creation of footpaths over an operational railway. And your lordships may recall, I deal with this matter in my case at paragraph thirty, and I refer to the case of Thomas against the British Rail Board, which is volume three, tab thirty-eight. Now, I'm going to take time going to it, but what that case shows is that whereas it used to be a belief that you couldn't have a, the creation of a public right of way across an operational railway, it can in fact happen, and indeed, the House of Lords had said it could happen. And it's a very losing judgment, because Lord Denning said that he made masses of money at the bar, appearing in courts, showing that you couldn't create that, that the law had been changed by the House of Lords. And, my lord, just consider for a second, the position there. Is one to imagine that the people who, the public, actually go in front of the train? Plainly, they don't. They would be mad if they didn't stand back if the express train is approaching, let it go past, and then cross the line. And if they do that for twenty years, they establish a public right of way, they can make an application under section thirty-one of the Highways Act, and absent an intention not to dedicate, they will establish a public right of way across the railway. That is then recognised in the Highways Act of nineteen eighty, which has been amended to provide a procedure for stopping up or diverting public rights of way across operational railways. You always used to have to go and get an Act of Parliament. Some of us make quite a lot of money in doing private bills for that, but now there's an express power where that can be done. But, my lord, that's a classic example where a public right of way can be acquired, notwithstanding that the user will respect the owner and let his trains pass. But the fact that, I mean, if we came to the inquiry, and it was said, oh, and the owner, and the network rail, said, well, look, we've got photos here of the people, and they were standing there, well, lots of people, but they were standing there, they let the train pass. Plainly, they deferred, therefore, it wasn't as-of-right. Lord, that wouldn't do, help them at all, because you can establish a, a public right of way across an operational railway. The same is true, you can establish a public right of way across a golf course without showing that you have gone in front of the ball. Now, in some cases of the golf course public rights of way, they ought to have been there before there was a golf course. But assume that there is a golf course, if for twenty years the public walk across it, they can establish a public right of way across it, in precisely the same way that a private person who's got a house can establish a private right of way across a golf course, and your lordships, where in many cases where there are adjoining golf courses, properties, and they've got a, and they've established a private track there. Now, that will always be exercised deferentially, in the sense that you won't normally drive your vehicle, if it's a private right of way, if it's a public right of way, you won't go in front of the golf. But provided you have asserted a right, i.e. done something under the tripartite test for the requisite period, you will establish the right of way. And it's no different in the question of the farm, if you have walked across the field, but the farmer says, ah, but when I went out there with my tractor, or with my combine harvester, or whatever, you, you didn't, you stepped back and let me go past, it's no different. Lord, in the respondent's case, they draw attention, in particular, to a case of Arnold and Blaker, and the Attorney General Horner. And I just give your lordship their references, they're vol one, tab one, and Horner is vol one, tab two. And in both those cases, it was held that a right of way was established, but it was a limited right of way. In Arnold and Blaker, it was a right of way which was subject to the right of the landowner to plough.
To do what?
To plough, to plough the footpath. So it's, so it was limited in that way, but even so, if as-of-right, you'd gone on there for twenty years, you've got a right to a footpath, but it was subject to the fact that from time to time, it might be ploughed up.
Was that written into the order? It, it wasn't an express grant, I take it?
No, it wasn't, it was, it wasn't an express grant, and the farmer, the farmer was bringing proceedings to prevent the person walking across his field, and was saying, look, you know, I, I've ploughed it up throughout the twenty-year period, you know, the, the part, once a year, I've ploughed the path. Held that didn't prevent a right of way from having been established.
Yes, well, you mentioned that yesterday, I think, didn't you?
And, my lord, the other case I mentioned, Attorney General Horner, this case I mentioned yesterday, where there was a market which was operated on part of the right of way at certain times, held by Lord Blackburn, that there was a twenty-years which established the right of way, but the right of way was subject to the owner's rights to run a market, provided he left sufficient reasonable space for people to get by when the market stalls were there. And, my lord, in my submission, those cases are no problem, as far as I'm concerned. They're really merely a working out of the concept of give and take. And if it were held that the right we had exercised, when I say we, the, the inhabitants here had exercised, was a right which was a limited right in the extent that they didn't, with the exception of Skoda and Niederkain, actively interfere with people playing their strokes, that's no matter. All your lordships are concerned is, was the land used for the requisite twenty years by the relevant inhabitants for lawful sports and pastimes? Answer, it was, and those limited cases don't take us anywhere else. And, lords, the cases against me are said to be the following. First of all, Hollins and Verney, which the, the Court of Appeal regarded, I think, as decisive, and that is in volume one of the authorities at page seventeen.
Tab seventeen.
Volume one.
Tab seventeen.
Volume one, tab seventeen.
I'm sorry, just, just, I mean, are you saying that whilst the golf club was functioning, the locals could or could not actually go and play on the specific holes? I mean, were they allowed to or not?
Well, my lords, I, I think the, the answer is, yes, they could, provided they didn't actually interrupt the, 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 the landowner. So, for instance, at the times when, when no one was playing golf, we've got examples of, I, I read to your lordship yesterday, two people who did simply go on and play. But, my lords, but, and I'm reminded, actually, one of them was while, while golf was in play. But the concept of give and take would, would mean that the owner must be entitled to run his golf club, and therefore, I, it must logically follow that if actually they regularly interfered with the play, then the golf club could have.
Well, if the golf club, if, if it's a busy Saturday morning, and there it is, there are people waiting to go up all the time, they can't intrude amongst that?
Well, my lord, they, they, they can't stop the play. They can go by, as soon as a shot's played, it's exactly like a public football thing.
No, 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 they can't go and stand on the first tee and say, terribly sorry, I have to wait.
Well, that is right, lord, and, and remember, the, where the people who picnicked, and, and, my lord, that would be an unreasonable exercise, if you picnic on the green whilst, whilst there's play in progress, no. Lord, I'm reminded that in appendix page one forty, one hundred and ten, it was Mr. Muse who used to hit his ball up and down.
Oh, no, I remember him, yeah.
Whilst golf was being played, because he got some comments from the golfers. But the key governing concept is going to be reason why. Now, coming to Hollins and Verney, lord, the key matter to remember about Hollins and Verney is that it was not a case about as-of-right. And that is absolutely fundamental, and your lordships will find that at page three oh seven. About twelve lines down, below the reference to Harvage and Warrick. The third line, the meaning of as-of-right, will be found discussed there. It is not necessary to examine this point, i.e. as-of-right, with any minuteness, as the right of way claimed in the present case may be taken, as having been claimed as-of-right within the true meaning of sections two and five. Now, my lord, I have to apologise, and that I did not refer that passage in that judgment to the Court of Appeal. Hollins and Verney came up, nor, so far as I recollect, did any of the other counsel, but I stand corrected. But, my lord, that passage seems to me to be critical. The case isn't about as-of-right, the case was about whether there was sufficient continuity, because in the first and the last years of the twenty-year period, there'd been no use, and indeed, the use during, from between the second and the nineteenth year, was very slight indeed. That's what it's a case about, whether the intermittent use was enough to constitute twenty-years continuous use or not. And that's the context of the key passage, which is at three fifteen, at the tenth line, it is sufficient. And it is this passage, which is referred to in the case of the. And it is this passage, which is referred to in the case of the first respondent, paragraph forty-five, second respondent, paragraph seventeen, and the applicant, paragraph thirty-three. It's this paragraph, which the Court of Appeal thought was significant. No user can be sufficient, which does not raise a reasonable inference of such a continuous enjoyment. And then going a little bit further down, two-thirds way down the page, can a user which is confined to the rare occasions when the alleged right is supposed in this instance to have been exercised, satisfied even this test, it seems to us that it cannot? Now, my lord, in my submission, it's not looking at the question whether it's as of right, it's saying, what do we do about these intermittent cases? Because most easements will be exercised intermittently. The, for instance, I give example, you won't exercise all lawful sports and pastimes save exceptionally at night. You won't necessarily exercise them every day. Many rights of way are not exercised every day. The question here was whether there had been sufficient user. And the test as to whether there'd been sufficient continuity was whether there had been enough to put a, a, to, to put the owner on notice that a continuous right was being exercised. But, my lords, with all due respect to the Court of Appeal, this case is nothing whatsoever to do with this case, where there was no dispute that there had been the twenty years' use, there'd been a finding, there'd been twenty years' use. The only thing in our case was whether it was as, as of right. And as we see in Hollins and Verney, it was agreed the use was neck clam, neck fee, neck precarious. We've looked at that passage earlier on. The trouble was it hadn't been sufficiently continuous. And, Lord, one of my learned friends wanted Hollins and Verney at first instance to be in the bundle, and your lordship will find it at tab sixteen. All I say, dear lordship, it makes it absolutely abundantly clear that the issue is the one of continuity.
So this is a right of way case?
My lords, it's a private, private right of way case.
Quite, but I mean the.
Under the eighteen thirty-two Act.
So, and is that the one which has the proviso?
No, Lord, because the proviso comes in the public.
I see, okay.
Comes in the public right of way.
So it's the same, it's just the same tripartite test, you say?
Same tripartite, yes. So it's, it's exactly the same as ours.
Surely the passages that the other side rely on is between the two you've, you've referred us to, is it? I mean, also, page three one five, but there's, there's been, it's about a mind of a reasonable person in position of a servant tenor.
Lord, but that is not addressing the issue of as of right.
No, no, I follow what you're saying, but that's the bit they presumably.
Oh, yes, of course, and that's the bit the Court of Appeal wrote. But it's to take it out of context. It's not dealing with, with as of right, because it was not, there was no dispute in that case that it was as of right. The question was, was there a sufficiently continuous use? In our case, there's no dispute that there's the sufficiently continuous use. And I say, the first instance judgment is very interesting for the comments made by the, by the various members of the court about absence of continuity. My lord, the next case which relied on by my learned friends is Sturges and Bridgman, which your lordships will find in volume three at tab thirty-seven, and it's relied on in the first respondent's case at paragraph nineteen and paragraph fifty, bracket six. But, my lords, that is the case about the, the, the consultant surgery. All it shows is that there can be no prescription where there's no power to prevent. That's the sole point of that case. And, my lords, that is quite irrelevant to anything which arises under section fifteen, because when you've got a use for lawful sports and pastimes which is open, there will always be knowledge and, and the ability to prevent. So I say no more about that. Lord, the third case is Field Common, which is, we do need to look at, and this is volume one at tab twelve. And, my lord, this is a case which we can see what it's all about in paragraph three. This is a decision of Mr. Justice Lewis, as he then was, paragraph three. Second sentence, the issue I have to decide is whether the council has acquired a vehicular right of way by prescription over a way that is wider than that conferred by the express grant. So they got a narrow right of way, but they had actually trespassed outside it and had they acquired therefore a right to the wider right of way.
Did you say as he then was?
As he is, as he still is. I've, I've elevated him, I'm doing it.
I could have missed it.
My lords, the difficulty for the council, who were the trespasser in this case, we see when we get to paragraph twenty-three. Because in the last paragraph of twenty-three, the council had written a letter. It said, clearly, I have to accept that the council cannot claim to have rights over somebody else's land and no such rights are claimed. And the same point be made in paragraph twenty-five. In the town clerk had written to the owner, saying, I reiterate, the council would not claim to have rights over somebody else's land if another person's ownership can be proved. And so, my lords, and then on again to paragraph forty, second sentence, the whole tenor of the correspondence between the council and Crete is the council made no claim to encroachment and relied upon its paper title. Now, as the law hoped ventured, when I indicated it sometimes happened, you had such as it is, of course, one comes to the principle of estoppel. And your lordships will see in paragraph forty-six, the judge said, on that basis, I consider that the estoppel had also been made out. And, my lords, we've included in the bundle, and I don't ask your lordships to get it up, the case of Thawner and Major in bundle three, tab thirty-nine. Now, that was a case on a different form of estoppel, as Lord Walker will remember, it was a proprietary estoppel. But at paragraph fifty, Lord Walker helpfully cites a dictum of Lord Justice Denning in Sydney Bolsham Investment Trust, which was one of these common law representation cases, and the traditional ingredients of estoppel apply. So your lordships there, we'll be able to find the reference in paragraph fifty there. Well, we've got Spencer Bowe with us, we've got other cases, but I don't think I can take it. But, my lord, in addition to finding it was estoppel, it does appear that Mr. Justice Lewis regarded this as a matter where, as something which was additional to the tripartite test. That you, in addition to the tripartite test, you had to have the appearance of being as of right. And that this failed because the letters failed to give the appearance. And, my lords, one sees that matter in paragraphs thirty-seven and the latter part of paragraph thirty-nine, where he says, latter part thirty-nine, what's important is the effect his words of conduct may have had on a reasonable servant owner. Yes, certainly, certainly, Lord, I'll go back, I might have to read thirty-four, of course I will do. The second question is, paragraph thirty-four, was the use as of right in the traditional phrase, neck fee, neck clam? That translates, these are three answers to the same question. Before breaking down the composite idea of three traditional parts, you need to consider the question globally. Then there's the citation from Sunningwell, and we've looked at those passages. Then there's a reference to Hollins, to Hollins and Verney. In my submission, making the same mistake as the Court of Appeal in failing to appreciate that that's a continuity case. Then there's a quotation at the top of the next page to Mills and Silver. But again, that thing was, again, was in the continuity aspect of Mills and Silver, and then thirty-seven to which we had reached. Now, in my submission, this is classic estoppel territory. And your lordship remember yesterday, my submission that it's also clam. If you in fact put up a smokescreen, then your use is the same as if it's clam. It's not necessary to have an additional principle going to appearances. Lord, the last of these cases, and your lordship wonder why I've been so long getting there, is Lang Homes, which is at bundle three, tab thirty-one. This was three large fields. And following a public inquiry, the inspector held that the land should be registered as a village green. And it is that decision which was challenged in the High Court. And, my lord, the challenge was bought on three, well, it was bought on four grounds, but three, it succeeded on three grounds. The three grounds were, first of all, that there simply hadn't been enough use of the entirety of the land.
This is paragraph fifty, I think, senses out, doesn't it?
And that succeeded.
Yes.
Secondly, that the local inhabitants had positively made a whole number of representations asking that the land should be used more intensively for agriculture. And never suggesting that they had got any rights over it. And that is the passage they've dealt with in paragraph one hundred and twelve and following. And that gets us back to very much like the estoppel, the, the estoppel-type territory. The third ground of challenge was the deference point. And the deference point was put on the basis of the importance of appearances. And curiously, my lord, looking back to the argument in that case, I don't remember anyone arguing for the owners that it was simply the tripartite test. So the argument, your lordship, having simply wasn't, did not raise. Sometimes it's surprising looking back, but that I don't recall that being argued. And the inspector had had no doubt that it was purely low-level agricultural activities. They hadn't really interfered with the local inhabitants and the land should therefore be registered. Plainly the view with which Lord Hoffman in paragraph fifty-seven was, we would say, concouring. Now, so far as this third point, the deference point, Mr. Justice Sullivan had two sub-ratio. The first was the effect of the Victorian statutes. We find that in paragraph eighty-five of the judgment, at page sixteen in your lordship's bundle. And that was then followed in the case of Humphreys, and your lordship remember in the Oxfordshire, paragraph fifty-seven, Lord Hoffman disapproved that approach, and Mr. Chapman goes back on that matter. So we're not concerned. But the second matter was based on appearances, and that was the passage dealt with in paragraph eighty-six. Like the inspector, I'm not found as an easy question. Rough grazing is not necessarily incompatible with use of land for recreational purposes, Sunningwell. If the statutory framework had made provision for low-level activities to coexist with filiary entites rather than effectively preventing them once such a use has become established, it would have been easier to adopt the inspector's approach. Just pausing there, of course, Lord Hoffman in Oxfordshire seems to think that the landowner can carry on, fitch and fitch, but he did not. I don't consider that using the three fields for recreation in such a manner as not to interfere with Mr. Pennington's taking of an annual hay crop for over half of the twenty-year period, sort of suggested to Lang that those using the field believed they were exercising a public right, which it would have been reasonable to expect Langs to resist. So that's the. My lords, that is, that is the origin of what I may call the deference principle going to appearance. And it's fair to say that in first instance, in our case in Lewis, Mr. Justice Sullivan slightly altered his wording there, but the, the, the end result is the same.
I'm.
Oh, no, no, I'll go back to eighty-two. Thus, the proper approach is not to examine the extent to which those using the land were interrupted, but to ask whether those using the fields for recreational purposes were interrupting Mr. Pennington's agricultural use in such a manner or to such an extent that Langs should have been aware that recreational users believed they were exercising a public right. If the starting point is how would the matter have appeared to Langs, it wouldn't be reasonable to expect Langs to resist. But we say as the starting point is simply the tripartite test. And if the tripartite test is established, that is sufficient.
He comes back to the same point at the end of eighty-four, doesn't he? Meaning he's.
Exactly the same. And it, it, the implication of Lang Homes is that there is an additional test. It's not just the tripartite test, but a further test of appearance. And that if there isn't the appearance, if in fact there is an element of deference.
This is really your argument, I think, wasn't it? Is it not your argument, Mr. George, that he upheld?
Sorry?
It was your argument he was.
My lords, I'm in the embarrassing position, but we are merely hired guns of the bomb, Lord. Yes, it was a, it was a desperate position for Langs. They'd had a huge development site registered. Well, we, we had to challenge it. We were unbelievably successful in that we failed on one ground, which was an, it was absurd that an ecclesiastical parish could support a modern village green. We failed on that, but we, we won on the three points. It was quite a controversial decision. Lord, my solution was absolutely right and considered my arguments on the, on the extent of use point and on what I may call the, the estoppel point. But, my lord, I think in the light of what Lord Hoffman said in Oxfordshire, the view of the inspector, it appears should have prevailed rather than my arguments, there's no appeal. What did I say? It was not an argument where I reflect any consideration being given to this as of right point. And much of the argument at the hearing, which is why Mr. Marici had come in, was whether there should be a declaration of incompatibility. That was the, what took a great deal of the argument before the court. And Mr. Justice Sullivan, at the very end of his judgment, sets out the argument. He plainly found that a very difficult matter and he, with respect, perhaps wisely left that issue because it wasn't necessary to decide it, because even under domestic law, he was going to allow the challenge. And there has, there, there yet to come is a straight incompatibility challenge to the legislation, but it's quite difficult, given the, the observations of the lordships in Oxfordshire. It's quite difficult to run that incompatibility point, but it may be run again later. But, lords, in my submission, as I say, that case was, was wrong. Lord Hoffman was right to imply that it should have been decided otherwise. It might, that was wrong on that point. It would be upheld on the other two points, and it might be upheld on an interruption point. That the, i.e. the gaps of time, the, the week or so while the hay was being taken, when people hadn't gone on to it, that might be a separate ground. But it's perfectly plain, Mr. Justice Sullivan didn't decide it on the interruption point. He decided it on the deference appearance point. My lords, so far as the judge.
The not enough use, where is that dealt with?
My lords, the, the not enough use point is paragraphs one hundred and five to a paragraph, to paragraph one hundred and eleven. And that's because most of the use was round the periphery in relation to paths which were becoming, which were either already or were becoming public rights of way. Paragraphs one hundred and five to one hundred and eleven.
Could, could we look just also at paragraph fifty? Just to be quite sure, that, that what he says in paragraph one of fifty, this is tab thirty-one, isn't it?
Yes, my lord, I apologize, I'd put it away. Paragraph fifty.
Fifty, and he, he sets out the, the grounds of challenge. And I think the one that we're, you've been addressing us on is one.
Yes.
And, and is it, is that the way you?
Of, of ground one, that was the continuity of use point. That, 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 that was the point, is the sufficiency of use point.
Insufficient evidence for which the conclusion could reasonably be drawn.
That's right. That we won on, and it would still be good on that ground.
Yes.
Then ground two was the hay cut. That's the deference point, of which I say it was wrongly decided. Ground three is what may be called the estoppel point, correctly decided. And ground four I lost on, although I still feel most aggrieved about this, because it was then on the last day of the inquiry, that the applicant said, oh, we've found an area, it's the ecclesiastical parish, and put in a plan of the boundaries of the ecclesiastical parish. But there we are, I lost on.
So exactly what's wrong, I mean, what, just so it's unclear, what yours, is it eighty-two and eighty-four, the reasoning, where is it?
What is wrong, Lord, is to add to the tripartite test an additional test of appearance and to assume that because the occupant, because the users adapted their. appearance, and to assume that because the occupant, because the users adapted their recreational use so as to allow the owner's farming activities, that that prevented the land, took the land outside the nineteen sixty-five act, under which the application of registration was made.
I mean, the appearance question, does that arise at all?
Well, the appearance did arise, because I think, in effect, I was running precisely the argument which, which Mr Lawrence runs here, that the key matter is, is how would it have appeared? And one can see that I relied on various passages in Sunningwell.
Yeah, and that's Lord Hoffman's reasoning.
Yeah. But what I say is, and we've been back and looked at Sunningwell, that everything in Sunningwell is compatible with saying that when Lord Hoffman, that there's various, lots of Hoffman, all he was doing, they were merely a manifestation of the tripartite test. And remember, lordship, I took you to the way counsel had put it, and we went through yesterday all the passages in Lord Hoffman's speech, that he wasn't suggesting there was an additional test, it was simply the tripartite test.
I mean, if I'm, if I'm disporting myself on the land, neck V, neck clam, neck precario, why do I then acquire a right? I mean, is it because, as Lord Hoffman seems to have thought, because the owner sees me doing that and must therefore be taken to have accepted that I was exercising this as-of-right, and he acquiesces in that, or he doesn't, he doesn't object? I mean, what is it?
Well, the simple answer is the word of the statute. In the modern world, one simply looks at, one simply asks the question, has there been lawful sports and pastimes for the twenty years as-of-right? If your lordship's question is the position before we had the new act, then we're back to Mills and Colchester, and all that was required, as we saw in Mills and Colchester for a customary right, and it's the same in the Seapole bumpstead case, is that residents have gone on the land for the requisite period and engaged in a customary pastime. That's all that is needed. Your lordship wonder, say, why that is so? Lord, why it is so is because the owner can, is on notice and can stop it. And the great weakness in Lang is it doesn't explain what on earth were those people doing on the land? If they weren't there in assertion of some form of right, what were they doing there? And if there are trespassers there who are satisfied the tripartite test, then there's a right. If on the other hand, they're merely there because they're tolerated, it follows from Beresford that the principle of acquiescence applies. It's really as simple as that. My lords, so far as the judgments below, I suspect your lordships will have read them. Lord, I have nothing really to say about Mr Justice Sullivan, who we didn't really have spent time on this first issue before Mr Justice Sullivan, and therefore it mainly goes to the other issue. But I ought just to pick up, so we don't have to go back to it, his paragraph forty-one, to say it's really irrelevant to the issues we're coming on to. Paragraph forty-one at page forty-five, I could readily accept the submission that when deciding whether or not to defer to golfers, the local users would have been concerned to ensure their own safety and behave in a courteous manner, and it would be most unlikely to have been the least concerned with any question of competing legal rights.
Sorry, what are you reading?
I'm sorry, my lord, I'm in tab four in the appendix.
Yes.
And I'm reading from the judgment of first instance, Mr Justice Sullivan, paragraph forty-one, at page forty-five of our bundle.
Forty-one, sorry, yes, yes, yes.
Paragraph forty-one.
I must have heard the paragraph.
So I can readily accept the submission, that was my submission, that when deciding they were, they were concerned to ensure their own safety and behave in a courteous manner, most unlikely to be in the least concerned with any question of competing rights, that the motives are irrelevant, and then goes to Sunningwell. The question is, how would the matter appear to the golf club? It wouldn't be reasonable to expect the club to resist the recreational use. And then the last sentence, what matters is the fact of... But the difficulty with that, and is that sort of a question where it be reasonable to expect the club to resist? The fact of the matter is that they've got their opportunity to resist. I mean, Beresford, the local authority, allowed the people to go on and play. They behaved, as I think Lord Hawker accepted in his opinion, a totally reasonable way as an owner. They'd no use for the land, and so they sat back and let people go on the land. But unfortunately, they didn't expressly permit it, didn't impliedly permit it, and they tolerated it, and that wasn't enough. But it is not necessary, and then he carries on to say, if their use didn't in practice interfere with its use, for we know from Cumbenhold that there's no requirement that the use actually interferes, that was what Lord Johnson said with the approval of the land, there's no need for that. And remembering Cumbenhold, the owner of the shopping centre was saying, well, you know, we impliedly permitted the people to go through, it didn't cause us any harm, why should we have done anything? And that argument didn't get them anywhere. And so forty-one is, so we say that that simply can't stand with Cumbenhold and Beresford, and it's the introduction wrongly of an additional test of appearance. Now, my lord, more critical is what the Court of Appeal made of this, and that's tab two. And the starting point of this judgment is to go on to paragraph forty-eight in the judgment of Lord Justice Dyson. And I just want to read to your lordships the first three sentences. In the present case, the question of whether the local inhabitants were using the land as-of-right depended on the extent to which they deferred to the golfers where there was a conflict between the two uses. Pause there, that was straight in the language of deference. There is no doubt that the local inhabitants indulged in sports and pastimes continuously over the land for a period of more than twenty years. Absolutely right. Next sentence, their use wasn't trivial or sporadic, and it was, neck V, et cetera. So we can see it straight away, therefore the Court of Appeal are adding something to the tripartite test, following the approach in Lang, with no support anywhere except from Lang and possibly Field Common, which wasn't in fact cited in that case. My lord, if we then go back to paragraph thirty-seven, we see the same following a recitation from Lord President Hope in Cumbenhold in paragraph thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-seven, for user to be as-of-right, it must also be shown it's been the tripartite test. So your lordship will see by that reference the word also, they were saying that it's got to have the appearance and be neck V, and Lord President Hope's views, which we've already looked at, were prayed in aid as support for an additional ingredient.
It's additional to thirty-five, isn't it? Additional to thirty-five. The opening six lines of sixty-five, must be shown their user as such to give the outward appearance to a reasonable landowner. That's the crunch, isn't it?
Yes, but my lord, yes, but yeah, my lord, thirty-five is Hollands and Verney, and that's all the passage which is in relation to the continuity point.
No, no, I follow, but I mean, that's, that's what the Court of Appeal are saying.
Yeah. They're saying additional there and thirty-six.
Also in thirty-seven is also to thirty-five.
Well, I think it's, I think, I think they're saying thirty-five and thirty-six go together and support an appearance test, and then you've also got to be neck V.
So is the sentence which says, it must be shown that the user is such as to give the outward appearance, the reasonable landowner that the user is being asserted and claimed as-of-right, is that right or wrong?
I'm sorry, my lord, I'm not with the sentence, sorry.
Sorry, third sentence in paragraph thirty-five.
Sorry. It must be shown that... Lord, in my submission, that, that, that is not the test. The test is simply the tripartite test. Actually, if the tripar, well, my lord, I think I give two answers. You should start approaching it by the tripartite test. If the tripartite test is established, then there will be that outward appearance. It is a concomitant of the use being open, i.e. neck clam, that it will give, but it's nothing additional to the tripartite test, and without permission and so forth. But it's not, it's not an additional test, and it provided you approach the matter rigorously under the tripartite test, you've answered the matter. And what is, what is not right to do is to apply an additional test, and there's no support, as I say, in any of the authorities who looked at, and we've seen many, many cases, say, as-of-right means simply the tripartite test.
If the local inhabitants give the appearance of going on to the lands and recreating themselves there because they believe that they have the permission of the landowner, that doesn't satisfy the tripartite test, doesn't it?
The crucial thing is whether, is whether they will, for precario, they'll have to be permitted. The fact that they, I'm sure in Beresford, they believed they had, they had permission, the people who went on there, and I suspect that in Sunningwell, the people believed, lordship, were not concerned with the beliefs of the users. To be precario, there's got to have been a permission which the owner has given and has communicated to the local people, like, as you do by the two thousand and three permissive notices.
Yes, you're right to remind me of that, of course, and that's elementary, but I have some difficulty in reconciling the notion that they believe that they are there by permission and that they're acting as-of-right.
Ah, well, my lord, your lordship, it's understandable, that belief, and I don't mean that at all patronizing, but very respectfully, but there's this case of Earl de Lavois, which is one of our authorities, because there was a view at one stage that if you thought you were there by one right, you couldn't later acquire a prescriptive right. But my lord, that, I'm afraid, was regarded as a heresy and was laid to rest in Earl de Lavois and various other cases. And in many of the cases, the inhabitants believe wrongly that they have got a right, but that doesn't prevent their use being as-of-right. If actually they have got a right, then it'll be by right and it won't apply. But if they're simply mistaken in their view, then it is as-of-right. And that's the way the matter was approached by Mr Chapman here, who said that many of these inhabitants thought that as commoners, they got, that there were rights because it was a common, that that matter was irrelevant. He was, he wasn't satisfied that they had got those rights. Would you, lordship, want the reference?
No, 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 you referred us to it yesterday.
Well, that's, I understand your lordship's difficulty, and I say it was a, it was a matter of dispute, but that, that, that was back in the eighteen sixties or seventies, that, that matter was, was decided.
I mean, I think, is it right to say this, Mr George? I mean, as long as you satisfy the tripartite test, and the use made by the owner didn't prevent the local inhabitants' use being itself sufficiently extensive and continuous, then the pass has been sold, that's it.
And of course, here, the difficulty for the golf club is that over the majority of the land, for most of the time, people were completely besporting themselves. It was only when individual strokes and things were being played that people actually held back, let it be played, and then streamed over it. And so in those circumstances, even Mr Chapman, there was no suggestion, Mr Chapman didn't suggest possibly that there was any continuity problem here, and, and, and no question, therefore, and no suggestion were any case of implied licence of any form. And he accepted, he said, well, you might think that the tripartite test is enough. But Mr Chapman said, however, that's not the position because it's Lang Homes. And as I say, I've already made my submissions on Lang Homes.
Before you leave this, could I pick up paragraph thirty-six in, in the Court of Appeal? Because the quotation from Cumbenhold is, is incomplete. And, and in order to understand the passage, it's probably helpful to look at volume one, tab seven, just to see what the full paragraph was. It's a very short paragraph, but it's, it's tab seven, page eight in the, in the print. And you'll see that the way it runs is the significance of these passages, that's referring back to Mann and Brody and so on, is that where the user is of such a bound in such a manner as would reasonably be regarded as the assertion of public right, the owner cannot stand by and ask that his inaction be ascribed to his good nature or to tolerance. Now, I'll come back to tolerance in a moment. If his position is to be that the user is by leave and licence, that is precario, he must do something to make the public aware of that. Now, tolerance is used in Scottish authorities as the equivalent of the obverse of precario, or rather, it's the same as precario, really, that I'm tolerating it, I'm giving you a licence to do this, and so on. And what's really being suggested here is that if that argument is, is going to run, he has to do something about it if the user is of a sufficient duration, of course, and also quality to suggest that a public right is actually being asserted. Now, I don't think that's inconsistent with your argument, but it is important to understand the point.
In my submission, it's very important, two reasons. I entirely endorse all your lordship says. First of all, you must never read part of the, part of the passage, the context. The key issue in Cumbenhold was, was there an implied permission? That was the key issue in that case. It's not the key issue in our case. No one's suggesting there was an implied permission. Was there an implied permission? Because mere standing back, what I call English-type tolerance, isn't enough. That's the context of that particular passage. It's then upheld in the House of Lords, who emphasise that it doesn't matter if there's no detriment to the owner, and it's then further taken on in Beresford. Of all, Beresford is the really hard case here, hard in the sense of tough on the landowner. I mean, those landowners must have been really aggrieved in that case. They would have been acting Wensbury unreasonable, arguably, if as a local authority they'd stopped people going on land. But they hadn't expressly permitted it, and they lost it, it became a village green. With hindsight, they ought to have put up the necessary notices, or they ought to have appropriated it to public open space so that everyone was there by right.
Where's Beresford just...
My lord, Beresford was in volume...
Five, five, fifty-nine.
Just, just a second. Beresford, we find in tab two at tab twenty-nine, but actually, we looked at it in five, we looked at, we looked at it, we looked at it at bundle five, page fifty-nine, because there were some, five fifty-nine, because there were some pages which were slightly difficult to read. They weren't actually the critical pages, but that's where your lordship had got it. And I, and Beresford is all about the fact the landowner has got to do something. What did the landowner do here? Until two thousand and three, he did nothing. And through his agents, the golf club and the golf club secretary, they apologised to inhabitants who'd been turfed off and said, sorry, that should not have happened. You shouldn't have been turfed off. We are on the facts of this case, absolutely classic acquiescence case in, in my submission. And no doubt the landowner would like to say, oh, well, it was just tolerance, but tolerance doesn't work in the light of Mills and Silver, Cumbenhold, and Beresford.
As you're right to say, you're using tolerance in the English sense.
English sense, in the English sense.
In Scots, it really means implied licence.
That's right, my lord, I was using it in the English sense.
Yes.
Tolerance has gone, is no use to you in the English sense, because tolerance isn't, isn't permission, and acquiescence apply. The consequence of tolerance in the English sense is acquiescence. You've got actually to do something positively, i.e. by giving a licence, either expressly or impliedly.
Tolerance not just a synonym for acquiescence.
Your lordship's right. But that's what hadn't been understood in Beckett and Lyons and those cases, which is why Mills and Silver, as I said, brought those to an end. There had been, as I say, these deviant cases, but they, but they are brought to an end by Mills and Silver and by Beresford.
Well, it could be said, in picking up Lord Roger's point, that the passage from quote, as I've referred to in Cumbenhold, probably was incomplete, and what I should have gone on to say was, if you don't do something about it, you'll be taken to acquiesce. In other words, it really comes to the same thing. Implied, as it were, tolerance is not enough if you don't tell people that that's what your attitude is.
There's nothing between me and, me and your lordships on that particular point. Well, can I just...
I mean, I, I'm struggling with this, but I think really what you, what you're saying is that all these ideas about competing use, I mean, and if and insofar as you have to give way, defer to competing uses by the landowner and so forth, I mean, those are considerations which come into play, of course, when you're deciding whether or not initially there has been sufficiently extensive use and sufficiently...
there has been sufficiently extensive use and sufficiently continuous use. But once they're decided in the local inhabitants' favor, they sell the pass for everything except the simple, straightforward tripartite test.
That's exactly the way Lord Scott put it, your old, remember in God Manchester, in the footpath case. He said, ask first of all, has it all happened? Secondly, was it as of right, which is net V? If so, you win, unless there's an escape clause, and there isn't an escape clause. Your lordship put it exactly right. Lord, can we just come back to the Court of Appeal decision? I analyzed this in paragraph forty-nine of the case, and your lordships may find it useful either now or later to remember it, to note that. The key paragraphs, I think, in the Court of Appeal's judgment are forty-three, paragraph forty-five, and paragraph forty-seven. And forty-three, the second, as Mr Lawrence puts it, it's not a misuse of ordinary language to say the use of the local inhabitants is interrupted during such periods in the sense they're not using the land. Equally, it's not a misuse of land if the users refrain from using the land while the owner is doing so, they are deferring to the owners. Now, matters is not what labor one puts on it, but how it would have appeared to the reasonable owner of the land. And whether it would have appeared that they were asserting a right to use the land. Well, of course, there, they say, this is the additional test, but what on earth were all those people doing if they weren't asserting a right to use the land? And then paragraph forty-five, in other words, there are cases where in practice the activities of the owner will be inconsistent with the use of the local inhabitants, the land, the sports and pastimes. The inconsistency will manifest itself where the recreational users adjust their behaviour to accommodate the competing activities. By adjusting their behaviour, they give the impression that they're not claiming a right to do what they are doing. But I come back to my, my people who wait for the express train to pass and so forth. Plainly, those people adjust their behaviour. And then paragraph forty-eight, we've already read the passage about net V, but crucially, he found paragraph forty-eight that they adjusted. Lord, at paragraph thirty-seven, your lordships will see that their lordships did recite what Lord Bingham had said in Beresford about the meaning of as of right.
Paragraph what?
Paragraph thirty-seven, my lord. That's the passage there, which I relied on. And paragraph thirty-eight, but Lord Bingham was not purporting to say it was a sufficient condition. So they held that there was an additional matter, whereas I've taken your lordship to Beresford to what Lord Bingham said and to what my lord, Lord Roger, said, who were both expressly clear in their speeches in Beresford that as of right meant precisely the tripartite test.
I mean, does it, I mean, does it come to you really saying that if somebody satisfies the tripartite test and does so by a user which is not sporadic and so on, and goes on for the requisite period, then ipso facto, that person or these people do give the outward appearance to the reasonable landowner that the user is being asserted?
You don't need an additional test, it's why there's the requirement that the use be net plan, it's got to be open, so that the owner can stop it. Here, the use couldn't have been more open. It's this danger of thinking that there's an additional matter. It's not inherent in what Lord Hoffman ever said. There's no argument in Beresford that the people who are going on there, that they, there's no argument about separate argument about whether additionally they gave the appearance of a plan, right? It was sufficient they went on under the tripartite test, and that's all what is required. And I come back to, you remember, Miss Tompkins and her limp and so forth. Lord, lastly, to take your lordship in this case to Lord Justice Ricks, who has a very interesting supporting judgment, which your lordships will study with interest. Paragraph sixty-five, he is very concerned about what would be the practical consequences. And he says, in my judgment, if it were otherwise, if it could be registered, there'd be no way of resolving questions and stopping people playing golf. But, my lord, I've already dealt with that, that's exactly the same problem which arose at Steeplebumpstead, Fitch and Rawlings and so forth. Those matters are resolved by give and take. And then paragraph sixty-three, he was absolutely confident, the last sentence of paragraph sixty-three, I agree with Mr Lawrence, that Lord Hoffman is there dealing with the most basic notion of as of right with which we can are in conflict. Name of inhabitants' use must demonstrate here that they assert a right to do what they do. As they ask, my mission is that that is simply a part and parcel of the use being net plan. Lord, unusually, the academic commentators have had a field there on this case. Can I just draw your lordship's attention?
I thought we dealt with those, we looked at these yesterday, didn't we?
My lord, I mentioned, actually, I haven't taken your lordship to them, but I'm not going to take it in time, I want to just identify where they are. Your lordship will find, in the order they were written, an article by Mr Petchey, who was counsel in Beresford, which appears in tab, bundle five, yeah, bundle five at tab sixty-one, it's also elsewhere, but it's five sixty-one for the clearest one to read. There's the one by Mr Riddle, also the editor of Provenia and Provenian. Your lordships will find that in volume four at page fifty-five. There's one by Mr Reader, who's an academic at the University of Buckingham. And your lordships will find it in volume four at page fifty-two. And your lordships will find that in my case, in the defendant's case, at paragraph thirty-four and thirty-five and thirty-six, I set out the relevant passages, which means that I need only take your lordship to one further paragraph, which I should have referred to, and it's in the article by Meagre, and it's therefore, volume four at tab fifty-two. And the passage, I have of course identified, your lordship, it's at page one five one in tab fifty-two. And it starts ten lines down the page, if the landowner is entitled.
Sorry, one five one.
Page one five one.
Left or right column?
Right-hand column, ten lines down the page, if the landowner is entitled. Now, your lordships would mark that whole passage down the rest of that page and over the page to one five two, to the end of the first paragraph, so diminished. Lord, I'm not going to take time on it, but I think your lordships will find that paragraph, that may find that paragraph of assistance for the approach. And at the end of the day, my submission of all this issue one, my lord, is that that is the test. We met the test of section fifteen, the land should be reached in. Can I just remind you, I said this. Well, I've already, I have a point that a customer right could have been established earlier, I've already heard it. Well, can I just, last word, flagging this. Mr Lawrence, in his case, paragraph six, is terribly worried about the consequences of this. Aren't local, given the life of local authorities, getting to that very difficult, what about schools and their vehicles? No more problem than always exists if landowners are sloppy about watching their land. All they've got to do is, once in a twenty-year period, take an action which makes the use be plan or precario.
I mean, that's all very well for the future, but what about those who have had twenty years' pass?
Well, my lord, if the pass, well, it's a sign, my lord. I'm about to say, some of us have no sympathy for landowners since Sunningwell. Position has been pretty clear since Sunningwell. Parliament was regarded as an unfair, and the Oxford Falsome Board lost their field. Since then, any landowner should know, people go on your land, even if it's only for dog walking, your land is at risk of becoming a village green with dramatic consequences. Your lordships didn't flinch from that in Sunningwell or in the other cases, and Parliament have confirmed that under the two thousand and six Act. It is simply people's bad luck, but there's no problem for the future. And as your lordship seen in the Act, you've only got a two-year period, I mean, you've seen under fifty, under the section of the Act, section fifteen, we looked at fifteen four, where there's that five-year provision where the use has come to an end. That's going to end soon, and then there's the two-year provision, but it's, apart from the others, it's got to continue. And, my lord, people have had adequate notices, and it is simply local will of policy.
Well, it's not perhaps our job, but it's a slightly unfortunate situation. And it means that everybody, a casual walker, is at risk of being ordered off everybody's land in case he's going to give rise to this kind of problem for the landowner, and it's...
If the landowner doesn't mind, he puts up a sign, saying, dogs not permitted, but walking, let's assume that's the case. But I give a revocable permission for people to walk on the land. I give no permission for any other sports and pastimes whatsoever. Now, there's still a problem there, which Lord Walker adverted to in Beresford and which Lord Hoffman adverted to in God Manchester, as to what happens if they defy the notices. Of course, that's not too great, because if he finds that people are picnicking and frisbee, well, then he's got to address that. There's the permissive notice, or he puts up the test. The lordship will remember, in the Sunningwell, a famous passage by Lord Hoffman, who says that it is grateful that the landowner is allowing people to go on to their land in this way, but not by permission, by tolerance, it's given rise to the public rights of the... It seems to be the real problem. But it's not really a problem, I mean, a sensible landowner can deal with that.
Well, does that complete your argument on issue one?
Then I can be very quick on issues two and three.
Well, I think issue two scarcely invites any answer, except the answer no, doesn't it? It's such a simple point, is somebody, simply because he walks in front of the golf and prevents the ball being played, is to be procuring the use as of right?
Absolutely, my lord. And Mr Lawrence, though, he can see that the answer is no. He says the only case where it will be no will be in the, it will be in a very narrow circumstance. Your lordship, if his case, paragraph seventy-eight, he says it will only be, it will be in a really exceptional case. Well, in my submission, there will be many cases where it doesn't follow that information, though.
Well, let's see how Mr Lawrence puts his point, I don't think you need to lay on that.
I just would ask your lordship, I do want your lordship to know where Fitch and Fitch is, first of all. I'm going to take your lordship to it, it is in volume one, tab thirteen. Secondly, my lord, I want particularly Lord Brown to know the statutory provision which governs, which governs golf at Huntercombe, which he will find in volume five at tab sixty, which is the schedule to the regulations made under the Commons Act of eighteen ninety-nine. And this appears in the supplementary volume, because it ought to have been part of volume four, tab forty-two. That's the regulations of nineteen eighty-two, tab forty-two. That has this standard scheme, and actually, at Huntercombe, it was made under earlier regulations, but in exactly the same term. And your lordship may be interested in regulation four of the schedule. The inhabitants of the neighbourhood shall have a right of free access to every part of the common and approval of playing games and enjoying other kinds of recreation they're on, subject to any violations they must cancel under the scheme. Well, that is the provision in the case of one of the most fashionable golf clubs in the country. And Maloney premister Pike unearthed the case of Wimbledon Common, details of which your lordships will find in my case at footnote two. And the irrelevant provisions relating to Wimbledon Common are contained in tab four, page forty-eight, giving the Act, Wimbledon Act and its bylaws. Lord, the passage I want to take, your lordship, to though, is in tab, is in bundle four, page fifty-one, a passage from Jackson. I don't want your lordship to know Professor Jackson's book on the law of profits and easements, recent profits, is a little old, and President Jackson sadly then moved on to other matters, because in my view, it was actually a very good rival to Gayle, and it still remains extremely useful. But, lord, what I would draw your attention in that is at page one five three, about halfway down the page, although McGarry J. It's merely its particular example of the general principle that servant owner cannot substantially interfere with the use. What restrictions he may imply, then on the facts. The owner of the dominant tenement, that's the user, isn't entitled to insist on access to every part, but only to a reasonable user. And then at page one five four, there's an important passage from the unreported case of Dyer and Muzley, which is referred to in the reported case of Keith and Amor, which is in our bundle, and a test of substantial interference. And then a rather splendid extract from the Irish Judge, Mr Justice Dawd in Flunam Heart, who says, the question in most cases is convenience or cussedness. In other words, that's a complete, a rather splendid expression of the give and take principle, the principle of reason which pervades the law of service units generally. Lord, so far, as issue three, the preliminary issue is whether as a matter of public law, and I expect an intervention from Lord Brown on this matter, Mr Lewis is bound by the registration authority's decision that there was appearance of deference. Now, my lordship, please, if you arise that I'm wrong on issue one, that if there is this additional test of appearance, certainly, Mr Chapman took the view that there was this deference, and given this deference, that that deference was an appearance, not as of right. And the first question is whether that is a decisive matter and that subject to a win through unreasonable reasons argued, that is the end of the day.
And you say, I think, in paragraph sixty-one of your case, that that expression, deference, requires to be explored. And the defect in the reasoning is that he hasn't actually gone further and asked himself, what was this all about? Was it actually a concession, or was it merely politeness and common sense and give and take and so on?
Absolutely right. The Court of Appeal found it was a fact. And that's then reiterated by Lord Justice Ricks, that it's a fact, you can't go behind it. Now, let's start, it's plainly only an inference problem, perhaps, at the most. And we know from Mr Justice Sullivan, paragraph forty-one, he says, or of course, the reason for the deference was they were being after their safety and their courtesy. Now, what was necessary, we say, is not just to leap and say, right, there was deferential conduct. Therefore, there wasn't an appearance as of right. You had, as Lord Hope has summarized the argument, you had to stand back and look at the circumstances. And the two particulars, first of all, to look at what's going on on the land as a whole. Although they were deferring the strokes of being played, everywhere else, they're recreating at will. For all we know, the people were standing back, they weren't being got up by the locals looking at the birds. But look at the patterns at whole as to what was going on. And secondly, what you've got to remember is that the concept of give and take, that you don't approach easements in the line of expecting always a situation that the landowner will take and that the, or anything like that, you look at a situation where the user... You look at a situation where the user is prepared to and indeed has to give way and allow some scape for the owner's rights. But that is necessary. And what we say is, A, there's not a jot of evidence that anyone on the owner's side ever supposed that the inhabitants weren't asserting rights. Secondly, when someone objected, the golf club bowed down. That's page one thirty-two, sixty-four. And they accepted the local rule that you would move your bull because of the dog feces. That's page one one seven, page fourteen. What we say is that the inspector's language is quite plain. It starts at page one six five, paragraph one nine five, where he said, I've got to have regard to the landowner as an additional factor to as of right. Then that flowed through to page one seven one, paragraph two two one. And then by his further report, which is page one eighty, the ninth of June, your lordship, remember, he's saying the deference precludes being as of right. And what a very strong language. It's not saying, let's look, let's explore it. He elipses to the conclusion that he precluded the use being as of right.
So you're saying in effect he misdirects himself on that point?
He's straight this direction of law. And then that's taken further in page one eight eight, which is the second decision of the twelfth of June, where he says because it deferred, this word, it was a matter of right. And again, that compresses the matter. But that's not the end of the matter. We then get to the twenty-ninth of July, two thousand and seven, page two oh four, paragraph eleven. And he's back to if precludes that word being used again. And that is then adhered to in the thirteenth of October, two thousand and seven, paragraph two and the third opinion of paragraph four. And we know that Mr Chapman seems to be getting off the rails from that strange mention of that quadrille, quadrille at a time, the only person who was causing a nuisance. I think the significance, that paragraph twenty-four, he seems to have believed that unless the users positively caused a nuisance, i.e. positively deferred, they couldn't be as of right. And then your lordship, remember that Justice Sullivan on the Court of Appeal said, well, this is a case of all give by the users and all take by the golfers. And those persons, that they couldn't understand how the concept of give and take had anything to do with it. And for Justice Rick's work one further, he said that give and take had nothing to do with the question why rights are being required, is only relevant after rights have been acquired. But also in my submission, that's more proposition. Plainly, the golf club suffered quite a lot. They had the special rules because they've got people walking their dogs and leaving the main roads all over the pitch and from time to time they were being interrupted and so on. But that doesn't matter, they don't have to show that. The crucial question was it had to be analyzed. And there's no evidence that Mr Chapman, much less the registration authority, ever looked at the matter in the proper way. And it's his case, paragraph ninety-eight, commenting on my case is that I may come further to the inspector. Plainly, he did do the wider picture. But he looks at the wider picture to see whether there was recreational use of all the land.
Well, the way it's put in the question and the issue is in the face of overwhelming evidence. And I think the force of the argument against you is that the evidence is really so strong that there was this deference to golfing use, that really there was no other answer that could have been sensibly reached. That's the way I think the issue is going.
What I say is that there's no evidence of the inspector looking at the position and considering, well, does this show, did these people really appear not to be exercising the right? You come back to a key question which Medja Wright puts in her article. What were the people there doing there, all these local people? Went there, appearing to be there, right? Were they doing, they're not there by permission. The only explanation must be that they're tolerated trespassers. But tolerated trespassers is no answer, they get home. But there's no evidence that Mr Chapman or the registration, the registration authority just accepted Mr Chapman's use and set it out. They never actually asked that question, which is surely these people were simply tolerated trespassers, but tolerated trespassers isn't enough. The question is plainly, we're finding a fact they didn't thereby afford permission. And therefore they're right. So we say it's a straight misdirection.
Well, I think you've said that several times now. I'm not sure that it bears much representation.
The last point is that if that's wrong, and if the position is, then I come to the reasons challenge. As Lord Brown, in an illuminating judgment, which he had probably forgotten many years ago in an IAA case, said, you don't really need a reasons challenge where the position isn't clear. And if I'm right on my point, that it's clear as a stretch of, you need a reasons challenge in a situation where there may have been an error of law. And that's the situation where reasons challenges apply. And what we say here.
Haven't I also described it as the last throw of the desperate?
Well, the Lord, that is, so I hope I've won on issue, I hope I've got a strong case on issue one and on my misdirection point, which is issue three. And while I'm not going to bash, Paul, but has a reason here for giving an obligation to give reasons. And when we look and we see that, and I took your lordship to the requirement. And what I say is when you look at those reasons which are given, there must remain a real possibility, I say the plainness of the misdirection, a real possibility that there was a misdirection of law. And that is sufficient because as Lord Brown, rehearsing in the judgments, probably most frequent equation of all in the international court, South Park's case, court number two, vol. three, paragraph thirty-six, the various matters are clearly set out by Lord Brown. Where this isn't a case where there's any discretion, I mean, Lord Brown's absolutely right, where it's a question of a discretionary judgment, then reasons will still be yet, will still be yet to end. But we're not a case of discretion. Whereas here, there is a real issue as how the issue of law has been resolved. That issue of law, by exploring the matter, we cannot see that that was properly done. Now, the Lord, in the second respondents, paragraph twenty-seven of the case, there is, I think a brudon for paragraph, in which Miss Crayle suggests that I'm asking for a third demanding test by the registration authority. But Lord, in my submission, like I should re-iterate respect of course of all Miss Crayle says in paragraph twenty-seven, but I'm not being as absurd as she very likely suggests I be. So she sets out, she says the reason would be convoluted. A, local people are coming to my golf course and recreating in places where and at times when their doing doesn't interfere. And that is absolute fact. And at that very point, we say they ought to have been saying, well, what on earth are these people doing and turning them off?
Well, we can read what, I'm going to interrupt you. We can read what she says and we'll no doubt be addressed by her in support of that point.
That doesn't take it forward. And then the Lord, I set out in my case, paragraph eighty-five, a reference to the Simplex case, which certainly Lord Brown would be very familiar with. It's in the Court of Appeal Authority in bundle four, page thirty-four, for the test for quashing. And the answer is that the court won't, within its discretion, the court won't quash if the decision would necessarily be the same. But where there's a possibility of a different decision, that's all that's needed. You don't have to say that there's a likely that the decision would have been different. In Simplex, Court of Appeal, the relevant passages are the judgment of Lord Justice Purchase at page three two seven, which is page seventeen, and the judgment of Lord Justice Thornton at three two nine, page eighteen. And therefore, in my submission, if I'm right on issue one, I'm entitled to registration. If I win on issue three, I think it's seven, so issue two simply at one step away. If I wish on issue three, if we're going to decide whether it's such an obvious case that your lordship can simply direct registration as your lordships did in Sunningwell and Beresford, or whether you simply quash and refer the matter back to the registration authority to consider deferred in the proper way and to use the proper reasons. But there's a mistake.
Thank you very much indeed. Mr Pike?
Thank you.
Well, Mr Lawrence, I think we've got about thirty-five minutes.
The Lord, stripped of the complexities thrown up by the decided cases, may I begin by asking your lordships to consider what is the core prescriptive principle? And the Lord, although it can be put in different ways, my suggested answer would be as follows, that if an owner acquiesces in an activity which is capable of being recognized as a right, as the subject of a right, and the owner does not complain about it for a sufficiently long time, he will eventually lose his right to complain about the activity.
And you would say that extends across the field from a private right of way to a public right of way to a village green or whatever?
I do, yes. My Lord, secondly, there are many circumstances in which the owner has nothing to fear from not complaining. Or to use Lord Hoffman's words, from not resisting what the user is doing. The unifying element, again to use Lord Hoffman's phrase, the unifying element in all these many circumstances is reasonableness. If it is not reasonable to expect the owner to resist what the user is or the users are doing, if it is not reasonable to expect the owner to resist what the user is or the users are doing, then no harm can come to the owner from his omission to resist or to complain. The Lord, we have identified ten different sets of circumstances in which on authority we say it has been established that it would not be reasonable to expect the owner to resist. I will mention some of the authorities as I go along, without necessarily taking your lordships to them in detail. But can I just give you my list of ten?
As a matter of interest, I'm not objecting to this. Is it actually set out in your written case or are you giving us something that's refined?
No, this is something, what I'm putting forward to your lordship is in an attempt to draw the threads together of what is the underlying principle that gives rise to prescriptive claims being successful. And I'm seeking to identify by reference to the core principle of acquiescence, which is acknowledged to lie at the heart of the prescriptive process. And to do so, to bring it up to date by using the formulation of Lord Hoffman himself in the Sunningwell case, when he identified as the unifying element in the tripartite test, that in each of those three cases, it would not be reasonable to expect the owner to resist the exercise of the right. And what I'm going to suggest is that in addition to those three cases, which are my first three, there are seven others, of which the present case is one.
It wouldn't be reasonable to, second case, it wouldn't be reasonable to expect him to resist what the person is doing. You've described it as the exercise of the right. I mean, if somebody comes on with armed force onto my land, then Lord Hoffman says, I think he takes that as an example of somewhere, of a situation where it wouldn't be, I couldn't be expected to resist, I think. I mean, whether that's necessarily the best explanation of that doesn't matter. But I mean, if that is so, it wouldn't be that I was accepting if he was exercising a right.
Your lordship's right. It wouldn't be reasonable to resist the person doing what he is doing. That's the, because we're talking about the consequences of what happens as a result of a failure after twenty years to resist whatever it is that's been going on on the land. So the first three of my suggested ten circumstances are where the use is non-peacable, secret or licensed, subject to a limited license of the kind that would mean that it was properly described, the use as being precarious. The fourth circumstance.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Just say that again. The first three circumstances are what?
Are where pursuant to our familiar tripartite test, the user is non-peacable or secret or pursuant to a limited license, revocable license. A fourth circumstance in which it would not be reasonable to expect the owner to resist the activity is where the owner could not reasonably, could not practically have prevented the user. Sturgess and Bridgman, volume three, tab thirty-seven. Circumstance five, where the owner could not legally have prevented it because the use was authorized by statute. The Beresford case in Lord Walker's speech, volume five, tab fifty-nine. And your lordships will find in volume four, tab forty-six, the nineteen hundred and six Open Spaces Act case, the nineteen hundred and six Open Spaces Act, section ten, which is referred to by Lord Walker in his speech in Beresford.
So in effect. So, in effect, the statute has overridden the common law. Is that the position?
It's a case where it would be a misuse of language to describe the user as having been precario, but it's another circumstance in which the use, although neither neck v, neck clam, neck precario, would not result in the right being acquired because the user had a right conferred by statute to recreate himself on the land.
I mean, your beginning is if the owner acquiesces in an activity which is capable of being recognised as the subject of a right, but you, I mean, you could in circuit, you're in a trespassing activity, because isn't that what all these things would otherwise be?
I agree, my lord, that in the ordinary way, the activity has to be trespassery in nature, yes.
But it wouldn't be under that particular case, because it's statutally permitted, you say?
Where there is a permission, precario, or where there is a statutory right, there is no trespass.
Yes, I see.
But what I'm seeking to ally my circumstances to all the time is the underlying sense of fairness and reasonableness, which governs whether the owner can be expected to intervene to challenge what people are doing during the twenty-year period. And I've given five instances of where he wouldn't have been expected to do that owing to these, the five that I've so far mentioned.
Well, I confess that reasonable doesn't seem really to come into number five. I mean, if the statute gives the right, that's it, that's the end of it. It doesn't matter whether it's a right which he might reasonably object it to. The fact is, the statute has laid it down.
That is so, my lord, yes. And it's an instance, therefore, an example, therefore, of the oversimplification that I say Mr. George has indulged in, when he has spoken of the type of issue that arises in this case as being simply an exercise in examining whether the use has taken place over the relevant twenty-year period in an open way, and then saying that as long as the use is also neck v and neck precario, that concludes the inquiry without more. He called it an exception to that principle, but I'm seeking at the moment not to explain it by reference to whether it could be described as an exception to the principle that user has to be neck v, neck clam, neck precario, but to see what the underlying sense of the thing is that results in the claim failing in these ten circumstances that I'm identifying. If I could just mention the last five...
Sorry, I'm not very happy about your number four, because Sturgis and Bridgman, I don't think that there is any recognised easement to make a noise and vibration on your own land, but near the boundary of someone else's, which would have enabled that to meet the part of your formula which says that it's capable of existing as a legal right.
Well, my lord, it may be that one simply has to concentrate, and I'm happy to concentrate for the purposes of what I'm putting, on the powerlessness of the Serbian owner to do anything about the activity in question. We'll perhaps look at Sturgis and Bridgman just for a second, the passage that I've got in mind. Would that be helpful in volume three?
Well, I don't want to spend much time on it, but if...
At tab thirty-seven. If your lordship just turns to eight sixty-three. It's the passage on eight sixty-three, ten lines from the top of that page. Here then arises the objection to the acquisition by the defendant of any easement. "That which was done by him was in its nature such that it could not be physically interrupted. It could not at the same time be put to stop to by action. Can user which is neither preventable nor actionable found an easement? We think not." And then skipping the four or five lines, "Consent or acquiescence of the owner of the Serbian tenement lies at the root of prescription and of the fiction of a lost grant, and hence the acts of user which go to the proof of either the one or the other must be neck v etcetera. For a man cannot as a general rule be said to consent to acquiescing the acquisition by his neighbour of an easement through an enjoyment of which he has no knowledge, actual or constructive, or which he contests and endeavours to interrupt, or which he temporarily licences." And then he says this, "It's a mere extension of the same notion, or rather, it's a principle into which by strict analysis it may be resolved, to hold an enjoyment which a man cannot prevent raises no presumption of consent or acquiescence." So, the focus is on an activity falling within that description. My learned friend asks me to read the bottom of page eight sixty-four, talking of the cases of Webb and Bird and Chasemore and Richards, "are illustrations of the principle which ought to govern it, for until the noise to take this case became an actionable nuisance, which it did not at any time before the consulting room was built, the basis of the presumption of consent, that is, the power of prevention physically or by action, was never present." So, I mean, what I would say is that the point that is being made there, without prejudice to my lord, Lord Walker's point being correct about the activity itself, an actionable nuisance being one capable of hardening into a right in due course, the principle is that there was no power of prevention physically or by action, and that that is the factor which led to the conclusion, and in the phrase that I'm seeking to put, the way I'm seeking to put it, your lordships, is that it would not be reasonable to expect the owner to resist, in Lord Hoffman's words, an activity which he had no power to resist. Now, the sixth matter which I would mention is this. Where the claimant has made it clear by words or conduct that he was not asserting any right other than such as he already had...
Not asserting a right?
That he was not asserting a right other than such as he already had, then it would not be reasonable to expect the owner to resist the activity either, and that was the field common case.
So, it's a kind of estoppel point. An estoppel point is it in, the user is stopped really by his words or conduct?
My lord, what I draw attention to is that although estoppel was one of the grounds of the decision in the field common case,
Yeah.
the first ground of the decision was based on what Mr. Justice Lewison said, when he said that one has got to look globally at the question, whether the relevant user had been as of right or not. And he, we seek to summarise the principle that emerges from the case, which is that if the claimant has made it clear by his words or conduct that he was not asserting any right other than such as he already had, then the user would not be of the requisite quality to be able to become the subject matter of a right. In the way Lord, Mr. Justice Lewison was prepared to look at it, was to say that it would not properly, the user would not properly speaking, be capable of being regarded as as of right in those circumstances. My lord, then, if your lordships just look at a passage in Bridle and Ruby for the seventh example that I would seek to give...
You're going to give us the example before we look at the case?
I'm sorry, my lord.
You're going to, are you going to formulate the example?
Yes, I'd like to do it by reference to the way it's put in the case itself, if I may, my lord. It's at tab five in volume one, at page one hundred and seventy-seven, there are two passages that I would ask your lordships to treat as my formulation of the principle. It's at letter B on page one hundred and seventy-seven in the Judgement of Lord Justice Parker, when he says, "The lines was also placed on behalf of the defendants on certain authorities, Attorney General and Horner, Campbell and Wilson, Rivers and Adams. These cases appear to me," and this is the first passage, "appear to me to establish that where a right has been asserted and acquiesced in on a particular basis, the claimant cannot thereafter set up his claim on any other ground." And then he says that they do not establish, and this isn't part of the proposition, he's making this exception, "they do not however establish that where a claimant asserts a right in the mere belief, mistaken, that such a right has been conferred when it has not, this negates any claim by prescription, be it at common law, the Act of eighteen thirty-two, or lost modern grant. There are certain passages in the judgements in such cases which suggest that a user cannot be adverse if it is believed mistakenly to be rightful, but this cannot be right. The true position, as exemplified in the Chamber Colliery case, is that user in an asserted," and this is the next passage, "that user in an asserted but mistaken belief that it is justified on a right of limited duration, which belief is acquiesced in, cannot be made the foundation of a grant of unlimited duration." Then, my lord, the user which is insufficiently...
This is eight?
Number eight. "User of the kind exemplified by the passage in Hollins and Verney, tab seventeen of volume one, at page three hundred and fifteen, as Mr. George referred to." Ten lines from the top of page three hundred and fifteen. "It is sufficient for the present case to observe that the statute expressly requires actual enjoyment as of right for the full period of twenty years before action. No user can be sufficient, which does not raise a reasonable inference of such a continuous enjoyment." And a little bit later, lower down, "No actual user can be sufficient to satisfy the statute unless during the whole of the statutory term, whether the acts of user be proved in each year or not, the user is enough at any rate to carry to the mind of a reasonable person who is in possession of the Serbian tenement, the fact that a continuous right to enjoyment is being asserted and ought to be resisted if such right is not recognised and if resistance to it is intended." So, he's putting it on the ground of ought to be resisted, reasonable to expect the landowner to resist the exercise of the right. You can adapt Lord Hoffman's formulation in the Sunningwell case itself to the facts of Hollins and Verney.
But the facts of Hollins and Verney were very particular, weren't they?
Yes, of course they were.
I mean, because they're set out in full in the first instance, page, tab seventeen, tab sixteen, page seven hundred and sixteen.
It'll be on tab sixteen at page seven hundred and sixteen, yes?
It was wood being cut in rotation at intervals of several years, the whole of the slope being cleared about once every fifteen years. I mean, that is quite a special situation, isn't it?
My lord, not only is it a special situation, but your lordships, I ask your lordships to accept, just for the moment, that what I'm seeking to do, given that this is the Supreme Court and your lordships are free to look at this whole extremely complicated matter, as it were, afresh and from the point of view of principle, I'm asking your lordships to overlook for the moment that my learned friend, Mr. George, is quite correct to have said that this wasn't a case where the question that arose was, is the user as of right? The question is whether it was user which was sufficient to carry to the mind of the owner that a right was being asserted. And what my lord, Lord Walker, has just pointed out from the judgement at first instance, was that on these particular facts, it wasn't sufficient. And where it is not sufficient to make the owner realise that the activity in question is that the right is being asserted to that effect, then it's not reasonable to expect the owner to do anything about it, to resist the exercise of the right. And similarly, and I would bracket this with this proposition that I'm on at the moment, this eighth proposition, is the case where the user is, in Lord Hoffman's phrase in Sunningwell, trivial and sporadic.
Sorry, I missed you. Is this the ninth point?
No, it's not.
It's still eight.
I'm bracketing it with eight.
Yes, so it's...
Your lordships may disagree as to whether it's entitled to a category of its own, but it seems to me that if the use is trivial and sporadic, it is not such as to bring to the attention of the owner that a right is being asserted, which he'd better do something about or face the consequences. And then, ninthly, my lord, are the examples given by Mr. Justice Sullivan in Lang Homes at tab thirty-one of volume three, at paragraph one hundred and two and following. And if I may, I'd like to read from one hundred and two to one hundred and eight. The context of this, my lord, is...
Sorry, can I?
Yes.
So, I may be losing the plot, Mr. Lawrence, but...
That would be my fault.
No, 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 but, I mean, going back to the, ah, um... Court of Appeal, I mean, is this, so to speak, a challenge then to the beginning of paragraph forty-eight of Lord Justice Dyson's judgment? Where he says there was no doubt local inhabitants in Darjean sports and pastimes continuously over the land for a period of more than twenty years, their use was not trivial or sporadic, and it was neck for three. I mean, are you, so to speak, are you going behind that to say that, you know, this is...
I very much hope not, because I'm going to, my final, my final number ten is going to be the facts of this case as being an example of a case where by reason of the way the activity was carried on, it would not have been reasonable to expect the owner to resist it.
And that's because of the deference, is it?
Indeed, yes. It's because of the fact that with one or two exceptions, there was overwhelming deference to the activity carried on by the landowner through the golf club on the land. And so, my lord, in answer to my lord, Lord Brown, what I'm seeking to do in all these cases, which will culminate with the paragraph before paragraph forty-eight in...
Yeah.
in the present case, is to say that the unifying element in all these cases are cases where it would not be reasonable to have expected the owner to have done something about it.
It's my fault, but I haven't quite grasped number nine.
If I can just mention...
No, it's my fault, I under...
Example nine are the examples given by Mr. Justice Sullivan in paragraphs one hundred and three and one hundred and four, but if I can just read the context. "The footpath order confirmed the existence of footpaths all around the perimeters of each of the three fields. The paths cut across the southwestern corners of fields one and three for obvious reasons. The presence of footpaths or bridleways is often highly relevant in applications under section twenty-two. Land is more likely to be used for recreational purposes by local inhabitants if there is an easy access to it. But it's important to distinguish between use which would suggest to a reasonable landowner that the users," and I think your lordships could notionally put a line through, "believed they," "that the users were exercising a public right-of-way to walk with or without dogs around the perimeter of his fields, and use which would suggest to such a landowner that the users," again, delete, "believed that day, that the users were exercising a right to indulge in lawful sports and pastimes. Dog walking presents a particular problem since it's both a normal and lawful use of a footpath and one of the kinds of informal recreation, which is commonly found on village greens. Once let off the lead, a dog may well roam freely whilst its owner remains on the footpath. A dog is trespassing," and then this, "but would it be reasonable..." And then this, but would it be reasonable to expect the landowner to object on the basis that the dog's owner was apparently exerting the existence of some broader right in addition to his right to walk on the footpath? And another example is one hundred and four. The landowner is faced with the same dilemma. If the dog runs away from the footpath and refuses to return, so that the owner has to go and retrieve it, it would be unfortunate if the reasonable landowner was forced to stand upon his rights in such a case in order to prevent the local inhabitants from obtaining a right to use his land off the path for informal recreation. And then the third example is this. The same would apply to walkers who casually or accidentally strayed from the footpath without a deliberate intention to go on to other parts of the fields. And there's a reference there to Lord Hoffman that I'd like to come to, if I may, just in, in a moment. I don't consider that the dog's wanderings or the owner's attempts to retrieve his errant dog would suggest to the reasonable landowner that the dog walker, and then again, delete believed he, that the dog walker was exercising a public right to use the land beyond the footpath for informal recreation. And then if I could just ask your lordships to note in paragraph one hundred and five, in the second sentence, if the use was discounted, the other activities over the remainder of the fields were not of such a character and frequency as to indicate an assertion of a right over the entirety of the thirty-eight acres for twenty years. And then, again, at one hundred and seven, the use being, at the end of one hundred and seven, the use being referable to exercise a public right of way and not a right to indulge in informal recreation across the whole of the fields. And finally, in one hundred and eight, the last sentence, he may be content that local inhabitants should cross his land along a defined route along the edge of his fields, but would vigorously resist it if it appeared to him that a right to roam across the whole of the fields was being asserted. Two points on this, my lord. The reason that I asked you to delete the believed that, believed they, wherever you found it, is that that carries a flavour of what Mr Justice Sullivan himself had said at paragraph eighty-two, when he used the phrase believed that they were exercising a public right. And in this case of Redcar, he said that that was inaccurate expression to include the words believed that they. So when your lordship is reading these, these passages at one hundred and two and following, that is subject to the same correction. Although we didn't draw these passages to the attention of Mr Justice Sullivan in the Redcar case itself, it's subject to the, the same correction that he made to paragraph eighty-two of Lang Homes. And the, the second point that I wanted to make just quickly before, if, if there's time, is to ask your lordships to look at the Sunningwell case.
So just before we leave the, the dog walkers.
I'm sorry, my lord.
Just before we leave the dog walker. I mean, Mr Justice Sullivan treats the dog walker as though there are people who went out, or a person who goes out with his dog and walks along a, along a recognised footpath, and perchance the dog goes off to one side or the other. But I mean, if you go for a walk with a dog along the, that's exactly what you anticipate is going to do. It's not the remotest, you've got no, no intention that the dog will walk along the, the footpath which you're walking on, because the whole point of it is that the dog should be able to, to, often it is, the dog should be able to run free. Now, of course, if it's one dog owner doing this, then no, no problem arises. But if, as I can think of, many situations where people who have dogs go, tend to congregate at certain places. They walk along because they know. Now, if, if I have people who are walking along a path with dogs and day in, day out, all these dogs are roaming off to one side or the other and enjoying themselves and disporting themselves and so on, might not the landowner have wakened up the idea that these dog walkers do actually think that they have the right to use via, in order to exercise their dogs, the, the land off to one side?
I entirely take your lordship's point. Your, your lordship may well be right that there would be cases where the consequence of the way in which the right to walk along the footpath was in practice exercised, namely by walkers allowing their dogs off the lead and then, of course, going on to the adjoining land and so on and so forth, that it would be reasonable to expect the landowner to resist the exercise of the right. That my point is simply to show you as my ninth proposition that here is yet another case where, depending on the facts and adopting Lord Hoffman's formulation, it would not be reasonable to expect the owner to resist the activity in question.
What kind of easement would it create? I mean, I, I, I understand the picture that one's got an established public right of way between two public places, which the dog walker walks along. And from time to time, the dog runs around chasing rabbits or whatever it is. What sort of easement is it? I mean, it's.
I'm sorry, my lord.
What sort of easement is it? Is it creating some other kind of public right of way? I can't see that that could be so.
No, the, the, what's, what's in the frame is that as a result of what my lord, Lord Roger's just been saying, the land on either side of the footpath in question becomes a town or village green. And that is why it is of the first importance, we say, in this case, to see whether, as we contend, there really is a principle that goes beyond merely neck v, neck clam and neck precario, where as a result of what happened on the land at the relevant time, it can fairly be said that it would be reasonable to expect the landowner to resist the exercise of the right. And my lord, then, it is not a question anymore of whether you force it into the straitjacket of as of right or whether what you do is to concentrate on the word indulged, indulged as of right or use the land as of right. It's simply a question of asking whether, viewed globally, the user was such as to make it reasonable for the owner to do something. And the only reason that, that we would submit that there has been the focus on neck v etcetera that one finds in the cases is that it is usually the case that where use is open and for twenty years the owner does nothing about it, it is reasonable, usually, to expect the owner to do something about it and to intervene and to contest what is going on if he doesn't want to be saddled with the consequences. And so, my lord, I was going to take you to Sunningwell, but my tenth case
Yes.
is this case.
Yes.
My tenth situation in which we say, on the facts, it was simply not reasonable to expect the owner to intervene to challenge what was going on, was in a case where the activity in question was not of the measure, to use the phrase of Mr Justice Buckley and White and Taylor, was not of the measure of the, of the right which would be the result of a successful claim. Why not? Because the pre-registration activity was one where there was overwhelming deference by the users to the owner. The post-registration scenario, if the appeal succeeds, is one where there would have to be overwhelming deference by the owner to the user.
Well, in view of the, the time, is, is that a convenient point to, to stop?
I'm sorry, my lord.
Is that a convenient point to which?
It is. I would have added one sentence, that just can't be right. And it's just a question for your lordships of finding an intellectually respectable way of giving effect to what I respectfully say is the absurdity of a golf club becoming a village green.
Well, as far as tomorrow is concerned, I wonder, wonder whether council will be prepared to sit at ten o'clock to give just a little bit more time, since we're losing this afternoon. Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, indeed, yes.
Well, we look forward to hearing you further with the solution to the problem you've set us tomorrow morning.
We look forward to seeing you then.